Good evening. This is the January 3 meeting of the Town Council. Our council is in order and in place. I would ask for roll call, if I may.
Councillors Beedenbender?
Here.
Crocker?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Dagwan?
Here.
Flores?
Here.
Rapp Grecetti?
Present.
Hebert? Leveque?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnepf? Stein Hilber? Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Thank you very much. There is an announcement in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is taping or recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, let's move forward. Pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please. We'll open it for public comment, please. Please keep your discussion to three minutes. Would any like to come in and please sign in? Please.
Can everyone hear me all right? Since it's three minutes, could I respectfully request somebody to give me a two and a half minute heads up, so I know I have 30 seconds to close? Would that be all right?
You'll find this a kind and gentle meeting at the start of the new year.
Fantastic. Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Right. So, thank you for that. My name is Cheryl Powell. I am the current Chair of the HHDC since November of 2018. I had the great honor of being nominated by the Barnstable Historical Commission to serve on the HHDC, and it's quite an honor. I was warned that there were clashes and friction, which is an understatement, and I want it to be known that I am neutral. I take no sides. I have goals of trying to repair and bring cohesion to the commission as much as possible, and have spoken with all the members as much as possible to try to help that to happen. I am concerned about the composition of the commission. Ruth Weil, in her professionalism and very astute manner, addressed the commissioners on the 7th of November. It was speaking to the composition according to Article 3, 112-27, which, although it's not mandatory, this is respectfully requested, to get a balanced commission for the seats for the Barnstable Historical Commission, the Massachusetts State Chapter, the American Institute of Architects, otherwise known as the AIA, and the Cape Cod and Islands Board of Realtors. She very well advised us. It is my understanding that we currently have three applicants that are up for two available seats at the moment, one for a full member and one for an alternate. There are two that meet the charge. Right now, I'm the only one that meets the charge on Article C, which is the Barnstable Historical Commission, but there is also two realtors who are on the Massachusetts State who are up for it. My reason of coming to you this evening is to ask if that could be respected. I agree, I totally say it's not mandatory, I respect that, but if we can try to get a balanced commission, I've taken a lot of slack that we have three members of the bid. I am not against the bid, they do a great deal for this town. I may be supporting them myself with a couple of their projects. But I only have three minutes, I can't talk about all the stuff they do. I do believe that they need to be on the commission because they have businesses that get impacted, but in the end, it is a historical commission. My concerns are that by not trying to balance it out, it increases the friction and the clashes, which gets very hard to help. I also am concerned about the recusal, because half the board is now bid, no disrespect for them, they do a great job and they're wonderful people, but if anything impacts on the bid members or Main Street, they would either have to, in my opinion, recuse themselves if it impacts on them and they benefit directly, or if they don't, and there's potential conflict of interest that could bring fines, which nobody wants that. And also, we need to protect the historical charter for the town. Like I said, I know it's not mandatory, it's respectfully requested to take into consideration. It may already be the case, I hope it is. 30 seconds, thank you. I'm only asking for a balance and asking if the Town Council could please help me to bring this commission together and helping to protect the historic charter and the historic nature of the commission itself. Thank you very much for hearing me, I appreciate it. And if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I need to go home and get breakfast, there's no disrespect, I hope, if I leave. I've worked a 12-hour day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council this evening? Please sign in.
Hi, you all know me, Tina Carey from Hyannis and Centerville. I'm also here about the Hyannis Historic District. I have to tell you that I was very troubled by last week of Mr. Eric, who's not here today, telling people that they couldn't say this and they couldn't say that, and they would be shut down, or they would be removed. That is definitely a violation of our constitutional rights. I think for three minutes, we should be able to get up here and say whatever we want to say, and that's the truth of it. The other thing is, there is nothing dysfunctional about the Hyannis Historic District. What's dysfunctional is the Appointments Committee, because the Appointments Committee, for some reason, keeps putting bid board members on this historic commission. I am a licensed real estate broker in the town. I applied back in June for a position. I was the only person qualified that should have been appointed, because I was a real estate agent, and they're supposed to have one on their board. They're all supposed to have someone from the Barnstable Historic, and they're supposed to have an architect. Instead, they put two bid board members on, and I know Mrs. Grecetti is the Chair of that committee, and she should be recusing herself, because her family owns property in the bid. Her family is essentially a bid member, and she should not be appointing people that have anything to do with the bid. And it's very upsetting, all this controversy that's going on with appointments throughout the town, there's something, there's something very unsettling about it. And there was a racial slur said at the last meeting to the only gentleman of color that we have on any boards in town, and the person who made that comment was appointed on the Historic Committee. So there is something definitely wrong going on here. And Deborah Dagwan is in here, but she is the only one that spoke up, oh, she is here, I'm sorry, Deborah. She is the only one that spoke up in defense of this person, and I think it just sends such a terrible message to everybody that this is the type of town that we live in, really, and something should have been done about it, and nobody should be told that they're not allowed to say anything up here, as long as they do it in a respectful way. So I have reapplied to the Hyannis Historic District, because I actually love historic buildings. I'm restoring a 1940s cottage, my business on Main Street was built in 1905, and I appreciate historic value of properties, and that's what the Historic Commission is. It is not supposed to be a political avenue where people are getting, you know, their bread buttered under the table somewhere. And you all know that I am not a fan of the bid, I have been fighting them for years. In fact, Mrs. Grecetti's father opted out of the bid back in 1999. I don't know if you're aware of that, but he did. I have the letter from the Town Clerk's Office. There were about 15 of us that opted out of the bid, and then the bids got together and changed the legislation, forcing us in and denying us the right to vote. And I'm saying that, no, we have a contract with the Town Clerk, it's on file, that we will never be members of the bid until we sell our properties, and that's the way it should be, and that's why, of course, I'm in a lawsuit with all of you, you know that, and with the bid. And I want to make that perfectly clear to everybody who's watching this, that you simply can't get away with doing this to people where they're not going to respond to it. And so that's what I have to say, and I thought it was quite disgraceful how everybody, how that poor woman who got up here and was in tears over what's been going on, because she has done a wonderful job on the Hyannis Historic District, and so has everybody who's on there, but you have to stop stacking the board with bid board members. It's just not right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion of our meeting. I would ask for council's response to the public comment, if they're so inclined. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Communications.
I feel like I grew. This must be a little lower. Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. Happy New Year to everyone. Before I begin my Town Manager's Update, I wanted to share with you that our Town Engineer, Paul Graves, for personal reasons, has stepped down and been reassigned within our Engineering Department of the Department of Public Works, and after consultation with the Director of Public Works and with the Director of our Human Resources Department, and with Amanda Rogero, our Assistant Town Engineer, we have asked, and she has accepted, the assignment of interim Town Engineer as we review this process for a permanent replacement. So I just want to announce that, this is a very important position to our community. Amanda comes to us with private sector experience, degrees, both undergraduate and Masters in Engineering. She's a professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts. She's served us as Assistant Town Engineer for the last four years since leaving the private sector. So I just wanted you to all know that that's occurred, and if you have any questions, we can certainly answer those. Rogero, I'm sorry, Amanda Rogero, actually, Amanda, stand up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Mr. Hell, would you please, through you and through your support, thank Paul for the number of years he's given our town.
Yes.
He's been a faithful employee and produced great products for us out of the DPW.
Yes.
So please extend our thanks.
Still with us, he's just reassigned at this point.
Yes.
Thank you. Town Manager's Update for the period of December 20th through January 3rd, 2019. We are proceeding with the tasks in our budget action calendar, and we'll continue to update you as we progress, but we're on schedule, and we will coordinate certainly through the leadership to the full council as, in the coming months, we bring forward our annual capital budget and operating budget. We've scheduled a progress meeting for January 7, Monday, with the Fish and Wildlife Department to discuss the future potential siting of water supply wells on their 250-acre parcel owned by the Commonwealth that directly abuts our Hyannis Public Water System. Very specifically, the town desires to continue working with Mass. Wildlife to finalize an agreement that would enable the town to install public water supply wells on the 250-acre Hyannis Ponds Wildlife Management Area. Given the pressure of providing water supply to meet the demands, and the process needs to progress without haste, the town seeks an agreement with the following elements. And I'm giving you these so that you know specifically what we're going into the meeting asking. I've been involved in this for more than two years, and we want to reach a point where we're making decisions and moving forward in a reasonably expeditious manner. So we're going to get real specific at this point as we move forward with the state. That the town and the Mass. Wildlife sign an agreement by March 31st, 2019, describing the conditions for the investigation and possible use of the Wildlife Management Area for water supply wells. The agreement will allow the town to install up to four water supply wells, appurtenances, and underground piping on the Wildlife Management Area. The agreement with Mass. Wildlife must provide the town either ownership or complete control and access over the Zone 1 areas of any of the new wells installed on the Wildlife Management Area. The town will agree to limit pumping of the new wells on the Wildlife Management Area property only to the extent that it has been shown to have a negative impact to the resource areas in that Wildlife Management Area. The, let me go back, to, you know, not to have a negative impact, I think I may have said that incorrectly. The town will agree to provide land of equal area and value to Mass. Wildlife to compensate for any area lost within the Wildlife Management Area due to the presence of wells and appurtenances. The town will agree to certain conservation and management practices on its lands in the Hyannis Ponds area only to the extent that it does not hinder its uses of the property for water supply production and protection. Much of this comes out of what we would have to do in siting a well anywhere. It's clearly spelled out as you proceed through this process from a regulatory standpoint, from a planning standpoint. So we're laying that on the table at this point, because we really need to continue to make very important decisions for our community. These are kind of the basic bones of that, and we feel that it's time to make decisions relevant to this. So we hope that it's a productive meeting, there'll be more, and I'll keep you updated step by step as we proceed. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has scheduled a meeting on January 16 in response to a petition from the Conservation Law Foundation and Toxic Action Center. The petition focuses on Mass. DEP's establishing treatment technology standards for PFOS in drinking water. We plan to attend the meeting to provide written comments and to make short oral statements. I believe Director Santos will attend. I've given you a link to the website so you can have more information. This is very important. You know, much of the language in there talks about dropping the standards further from the Point 07 to Point 02. We need to know this is coming, we need to plan for this, we need to have time for this, and I believe that there will be impacts beyond just the Hyannis Water System by this type of change, and certainly Director Santos is more directly in tune with the significance of this, so we will watch it very carefully, and we will keep you advised as this progresses. On November 27, 2018, I attended the Board of Health hearing to further discuss the proposal to eliminate or modify the interim saltwater estuaries reg. There's another hearing scheduled for January 22, 2019, and we'll keep you advised of the progress on this matter. I would highly recommend that, and I had long conversations with both DEP Boston and DEP Regional in Lakeville, and as we go into our wastewater update, I'll advise you a little more on that, but I can certainly tell you that there's lots of communications out there about what this discussion is. I would highly recommend that rather than listening to any individual, myself included, go back to the December 2017, go back to the February Town Council Meeting Update, go to the August, September, October, November meetings, and watch what was said. And I think in the most recent Board of Health meeting on November 27, that gives a very thorough overview of what this issue is all about, and after the individuals from the state had done that, I was fortunate to have subsequent conversations, and it was actually a significantly different conversation. So we'll keep you advised as we progress on that particular issue. But please, watch it yourselves. Don't just go with what someone else says, and you can come to whatever conclusion you believe appropriate. The town received a Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant from the Commonwealth in 2018 to continue climate chain resiliency planning, and is working with partners from the Cape Cod Commission, Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, and Woods Hole Sea Grant to complete this effort. Through the MVP, that's the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Process, the town seeks to confirm existing and identify future vulnerabilities in the infrastructure, people, and environment resulting from natural hazards and changing climate conditions, and to collect, develop, and prioritize municipal and community response actions. A day-long community workshop is being planned in early February to develop the required assessment and action plan. Communities who complete the MVP program become certified as an MVP community and are eligible for Commonwealth MVP action grant funding and other opportunities. We'll keep the Town Council advised of the schedule for the workshop and progress on this matter, and as always, we will inform the public, because we'd like to have as much participation in that workshop as possible. Please visit our Town of Barnstable new and improved website. If you haven't had a chance to go online and check it out, we have, that did go live the first of the year, and please take a look at it, please give us your feedback, both council and public. Lynn Poyant is here. Lynn Poyant, with our technical staff, has really carried the brunt of moving forward with that, so I greatly appreciate their efforts, and I also appreciate our senior staff taking the time to go through it and try to update it as best as possible, and I believe there's still a link to the old website, and it'll be up for a certain amount of time. I've provided the same update that I provided you at the last meeting in December, relevant to Vineyard Wind. They do have various reports that are online, I've given the Town Council all of the links to these various reports as they still move through their permitting process. There is a meeting planned in Hyannis on Tuesday, January 15, 2019, at the Doubletree Hotel, Cape Cod Room, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., involving a presentation and question and answer. It'll begin, question and answer begins at 6:00 p.m. There's a forum at Town Hall that's scheduled for March 12, 2019, so they'll be doing a presentation here, we're going to record it, and then we'll be able to replay it for our residents, people will also be able to go into the website and relook at it, and I would encourage all to do that. They're also available to meet in the villages. I know Centerville and Barnstable villages have, through their councilors, have expressed interest. Any and all others, please reach out and request that, and they will be in here. I'm expecting that they're going to, I'll be moving forward with this in the fall, so we're going to want to keep up to date, we're going to want to know the schedules. Later this evening, you'll even see a first reading of some design, so that we can make sure we've got our utilities in the ground before they do some final paving of our roadways, because that'll be, and it'll be a nice end product for us to have some of our major roadways repaved. That concludes my update, and now what I would like is for Richard Scally, Director of Regulatory Services, to provide an update on the facts related to the estimation of seasonal population hearing for the seasonal package licenses. There's a hearing that's scheduled on Monday, January 7, at 9:30. This is something that I briefed you on at the last council meeting, there were several questions, detailed questions, that I couldn't answer, and I suggested that I have Director Scally here, so that he may be able to give you a more detailed update of this.
Before we ask the Director to speak, could I ask if any of the councilors had any discussion on the first part of the Manager's Update? Yes, please, Council Benner.
Hi, thank you. Happy New Year. Just a quick question on the land swap that might occur with fish and wildlife, are we looking at conservation land for that swap? Like, what would the, it's apples to apples, I assume, as far as acreage and?
To be determined.
Okay, thanks.
They're usually looking for land of equal value. Now, that could be, it's not just monetary, it's typically lands that hold the same, it's upland, or, you know, so it depends.
But it's not species-specific or something like that?
Again, I need to, I need to know more details about exactly where and what we're going to do, and then I can answer your question.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Council Cullum. Council Beedenbender?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. I have a couple of comments, a couple of questions in regards to the wells, and I apologize if I've missed this. Will these wells be in addition to the existing wells, or these are replacement wells for the existing wells?
In addition.
Okay, great. I want to say thank you very much to Lynn Poyant and the IT team for the new website. It is beautiful, and it's so much easier to use. It was great to hop on there and find some things within moments, and also, as, looking at it through the lens of a taxpayer in this town, the ease of finding your property values and those various boards that you might be interested in, so really well done. I do have a question in relationship to that, though, is that there are sections, I noticed, that they didn't look like they were complete, or they might still be under construction. Is that the case? Okay, so, thinking of that with the lens of, as I see things that I might, you know, we think need fixing, I want to, knowing that there's stuff that's still not finished is good to know. Could you please email us your Town Manager comments, because the links are really hard to get to on the paper?
No matter how hard I try.
You mean you can't make that blue? I thought because it was blue that you could do that, yes, of course.
It's blue, and it's underlined, but I can't get to it.
I will just, each meeting, I will forward it to Cynthia.
That would be great, thank you.
And she can share it.
Thank you. And then the last point, going back to these Board of Health regs, there is, seems to be sort of like these conflicting ideas, perceptions of what's at play here, and it's interesting, because in all the, in the presentations that I've heard you talk about it, or independent conversations that you and I have had, you have been very clear that this is just in the interest of having a review of those regs. It's about looking at them, looking at their inception, what they've accomplished, is this still relevant, you know, what are our options moving forward? It is just a full-scale review, as opposed to what seems to, I mean, even in the, even in your, in Point 4, it says, "To further discuss the proposal to eliminate or modify", which sends a slightly different signal. So I would just say that whenever we're talking about these things, if this is truly, we're just at a moment of review, that we're very clear in our language that that's what's going on, as opposed to we're lifting or modifying before we've even gotten to that point. So that's it. Thank you.
I think it's important to watch the videos. This does fall under the authority of the Board of Health, so how it unfolds will be determined by the board, and I'm there to provide support, information. As Town Manager, I do believe that on any issue, it is my responsibility to come forward and ask what I believe to be intelligent questions, and then obviously defer to the authority of whomever I'm speaking to proceed with that. That's what we've done in this case, and we'll see how it unfolds at the next meeting and future meetings.
Thank you, Council Beedenbender. Yes, Council Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I just have one question. The Mass. DEP meeting on January 16, is that a public meeting?
I'll ask Director Santos, I don't know that it is. Yes, it is a public meeting.
Where would the location be?
DEP Headquarters, 1 Winter Street in Boston.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Neary. Thank you, Council Lennery. Anyone else? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. First, I want to commend you, Mark, and your team for actually appointing a female to the position of town engineer. It's not many towns and communities where you see a woman in that position. So, as a father of four daughters who have always fought to make sure that there are equal opportunities across the board, it's wonderful to see a woman who will be the town engineer, at least in an acting position. So hats off to that. Secondly, I'm just curious on the wells, that discussion. Have we actually identified locations? Have we identified water source there? Or are we still in the process of getting permission?
We've simulated locations.
Simulated?
Yeah. Modeled, modeled.
Okay, so once we get approval, then we'd actually have to put the drill in the ground to be sure that what we have modeled, we think works.
Yeah, we have, we have a couple of years that we would work typically with DEP to go through this process. We're trying to get to a decision point. And it's time for that decision.
Okay, and finally, just two other quick comments. I echo Council Beanbender's comments on the new website. Job well done. Much easier, less cluttered to be able to find where things are. So I know a website is always a living kind of document and it's always changing and being updated. So hats off also to that effort. And finally, relative to the environmental protection issue around PFAS, if we drop from point 0.7 to point 0.2, that means that pretty much across the town, we're going to have to reevaluate every well system that we have because that really lowers the standard in terms of whether or not we would be in violation of federal DEP rules and regs, coupled with state, I would assume.
It all depends, and I'm going way out on a limb here, but it all depends on, it's an advisory. So it all depends on how the regulators go forward with that. Our experience, when they dropped it from 2 to point 0.7, was not a good one.
Correct.
To inform us on a Sunday leading into summer season that they were going to put in place this advisory was problematic. So we're assuming that something like that could happen again. We want to stay ahead of it. Director Santos has been, you know, day-to-day engaged in this since prior to that occurring, meaning the last change in the advisory level. We'll continue to monitor it. But I do believe that we are also going to see ourselves spending a lot more time in our community discussing this with water purveyors because dropping it from point 0.7 to point 0.2, but that isn't what this is about, really. That's like a secondary part of this as I read it. I think what they're trying to do is get the DEP to put in place technical standards for the systems so that it'll prevent an exceedance of that point 0.2, which is a little bit different. And then if it, if they can't have treatment systems in place to prevent that, then there might be an advisory standard. I think this is like a twofold. But what I'll do is I'll have Director Santos, after this hearing, come in and he can provide a briefing to the council. But it's definitely something, it's very important. We've known that this discussion has been going on. And it merits all Cape Cod to be watching this, but certainly us here because we've been in the forefront of this issue.
Right, and the most probably critical issue that we face even from being counselors as well as being residents of Cape Cod is the quality of our water. If we don't have excellent quality of our water, we lose Cape Cod for all intents and purposes. So whether it's at point 0.7 or point 0.2, it's a critical issue that we have to be really on top of our game. So something we have to monitor very closely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? I would like to discuss that very same article with you. Obviously, I feel fortunate that we've been discussing this for a number of years. So I just think it was important to lay out a little more of the business that's out there. You and I first talked about this in the summer of 17, if I'm not mistaken. You've put together a terrific group with a great history and they've gone up there to meet with them several times. We have negotiated with this group before and have worked out a situation where we swap land with them to conclude the bike path. None of this so far is out of the realm of a realistic approach to trying to do business with them. Secondly, they have a number of monitoring wells out there and we've asked to test the water and we know that that water's good. We know our infrastructure is headed up that hill and headed in the right direction. And we know we don't want people coming on Cape Cod with the news saying that we're giving out bottled water at Cape Cod Hospital, at the Melody Den, at the airport, at the ferry, at Town Hall. So we have to find a resolve with them or without them. Do you think we're at that point that we hopefully will get this back onto a reasonable track that we either will be able to advance it? Because it's still years of work to get DEP to give us a wellhead and millions of dollars. So we need to commence that in one or two locations as we go forward. So how much time are we willing to look at for this issue to come our way? You set a deadline of March and that, is that a realistic deadline in your opinion?
Yes.
And we must seek other alternatives if we don't have a resolve here at some point?
Yes.
Okay. I think everybody should understand what's important. These are people we've done business with. We have a great standing with them. And yet this thing has turned sideways for some unknown reason. And I applaud the effort that's been brought forward by your staff and by you in trying to pursue this because there is no bigger issue for us at this time.
Yes.
So, thank you.
And we will certainly, as always, be reasonable in proceeding with this. But we've got to put a timeline on it. Can't keep talking about it. It's time to make a decision.
And we can't keep taking two steps backwards.
Correct.
I mean, the discussion is clear. I mean, when they assign a biologist to try to give us terms and conditions that exceed what we would do in the round two of the DEP wellhead system, then they're kind of veering out of their lane with great, with great ferocity that is causing us great concern whether or not they're really here to do a deal with us. So please, we're, you've got support of this council. I know that for sure. And we wish you well coming forward.
Thank you.
I'm feeling kind of short now that Mark felt kind of tall, so that's okay. Good evening, counselors. I'm Richard Scali, Licensing Director. And I'm here to give you an update on a hearing that's coming up on Monday with the Licensing Board with regards to seasonal, like, the seasonal population estimation for package store licenses. So I've handed out to you a memo with regards to the facts with regards and the history with regards to this. It includes the attachment to special legislation from 1982 and the current law under MGL 138, Section 17. So the Board will hold a hearing on Monday at 9:30, January 7, 2019. The hearing is strictly to determine an estimation of increase in seasonal population as certified by the town clerk on a date specific, which is July 10, 2019. The statute specifies that that's the specific date that is required to be looked at. So the authority will hold this hearing, must hold this hearing before March 1 of every year, or can hold it, but it has to be before March 1, to just consider the seasonal increase. The authority may then, but are not required to, use this information to issue seasonal package store licenses, either wine and malt or all alcohol package licenses. And they could run from April 1 to November 15 or from April 1 to January 15 of each year. According to the special legislation from 1982, the authority may consider one license per 5,000 population or portion thereof seasonal increase that exceeds that number, which would otherwise permit the issuance of 10 such seasonal licenses. So that's a little hard to figure, but it would have to be a number above what you would grant, if you were going to grant 10 more licenses, you have to go above that number to issue more licenses. So I pulled the information from this electman's hearing from November 16, 1982. And this was the meeting that converted all of our seasonal package licenses to annual all-alcoholic package licenses. And this was pursuant to Chapter 351 of the Special Acts of 1982, which gave the town the legislative authority to do so. At that time, there was a list of eight package licenses that were converted. I went over this list with the ABCC Legal Council and we found seven licenses that were currently attached to licenses in operation. The eighth one, which was Barnstable News, was canceled in 2012. So in reviewing the quota number of licenses for Barnstable, the population for Barnstable, according to the federal census, currently 46,193. We are allowed one license for each 5,000 people or portion thereof in each category, wine and malt, and then also all alcohol. So under the wine and malt category, we currently have 10 licenses and we're allowed 10 licenses by quota. Under the all-alcoholic package category, it's a little bit more complicated. The quota, we are allowed is 10 licenses. However, currently, we have 14 licenses that are issued. And the question became whether we included our former seven seasonal licenses in that count or did we add seven more to the count of 10 for a total of 17? However, in conferring with the ABCC Legal Council, he explained to me that our legislative act did not specify that it would be in addition to our quota. So there is also ABCC case law, which has been adjudicated in 1992 and 2007, which he feels clarifies that seasonal licenses are not part of the quota and are not in addition to the number. So however, if we have licenses that are above the number of 10, which we do, and operating, they are allowed to be transferred as long as they're not canceled or revoked. And these additional licenses may continue to be issued. So therefore, according to the ABCC, we have 14 annual all-alcohol package licenses that are operating, which is four above our quota of 10. And these 14 licenses may continue to exist, assuming they adhere to all the laws and regulations. We do not have any other licenses available to be applied for or issued. So if the licensing authority on Monday considers and accepts all the information on the estimation of the seasonal population, they could, but are not required to, allow more seasonal package licenses on a case-by-case basis, going on the regular hearing process for each. And there's a case that I've attached there, the Ballerin case, which lists the conditions of what the commissioners must consider with regards to those licenses. According to the town clerk, the Barnstable population increases by approximately 100,000 in June, July, and August, which would go to approximately 146,193. If this is indeed the case, the authority could consider 10 seasonal package licenses, which would represent the increase in population from 100,000 to 146,193. If the authority, however, looks at the current number of annual package licenses, of which there are 24, they may consider that we are over by four licenses according to the current population and due to the conversion of licenses from 1982. So that's kind of a short synopsis of what they'll be considering. The hearing on Monday is strictly about, is there an increase in seasonal population on July 10 of any year, particularly 2019? And that's what they'll look at to determine the number of seasonal package licenses. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I can't give you a lot of information all at once, but.
Well, the first question I would ask is that, how will you be participating in the meeting? Will you be there to discuss that there is a surge in our population? Or how do you see the role that you intend to?
The role, well, my role and the role of the staff is to give that information to the commissioners. We've contacted the town clerk, who's given us a letter certifying that increase in the number, which I'll provide to the commissioners. I've also contacted the Chamber of Commerce and talked with Wendy Northcross. And she's provided me an analysis of what she considers to be an increase in the population for hotels and stays during July.
So the premises, we'll have an active discussion about there is an increase?
Yes, there'll be an active discussion about whether that is indeed true and whether they should consider that and take any testimony or witnesses that may or may not dispute that number.
Thank you. With that in mind, council questions? Council Cullen?
Yeah, I mean, it's more of a comment than anything because it doesn't lie in our hands anyway. But, you know, we do, we have a lot of consideration now about the opioid epidemic. And I have to say openly that I sell wine for a living. That's what I do. And I'm in and out of liquor stores all day, every day. Even on the weekends, I do wine tastings, the whole nine yards. That's how I make my living. But when we talk so much about the overabundance of alcohol being the silent killer, the thing that's killing people faster, except opioids, which is a really dramatic killer. But alcohol has been devastating people for generations, right? That's, this is one argument. I just find it really hard to believe that we couldn't use reason to figure that out. Now, that's now from an economic standpoint. We have a lot of licenses now in town because I can tell you that Monday through Wednesday, I'm busy from 8:30 to 5:30 in liquor stores. So we have, I believe, as a community, we have a responsibility to help the people who own those stores make it year-round. And if I'm not wrong, a seasonal license would be from May to November. Is that right, April to November?
April 1 to November 15?
Yeah.
Or to January 15?
I guess I'm curious as to whether there's a way we can speak to, if there's a need. Because being in and out of liquor stores constantly every day, I can tell you they're never more than four deep at the register, even in August. And I bet there'll be a huge pushback from the community that owns these liquor stores if their summer sales are to be diluted by people who come in for 90 days. I think it's really unfair. And I know the decision doesn't lie with this council. But I think economically, it's a really bad move. And I think that if we're on target to talk about prevention in our community, flooding it with even more liquor stores is a really bad idea. So, thank you.
The process is really a two-step process. It doesn't, the hearing on Monday will definitely be just about the population and whether they can even consider the number. It will then go to the second step, which will indeed still, under the Ballerin case, show all the items they have to consider, need, traffic, public safety issues. All those things have to be considered before they would even issue a license, just like any other license. So what you're saying is exactly true. They have to consider all those items before they issue the licenses.
One, I'm sorry, one follow-up if I may. At this next meeting on Monday, should concerned liquor store owners show up at that meeting or should they wait? Because I'm sure there'll be a lot of public comment that will, you know?
Sure, well, of course, anyone's welcome to come and comment and attend. But the hearing is strictly about the population increase estimation.
And then the next meeting will be the one that determines the rest of it?
Correct.
Okay, could you please keep a surprise of that so that people know? Because that's something the public should know, I believe. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Council Dagman, did I see?
Yes, Mr. Scali, thank you for your presentation. It's very enlightening to find out that we have this many liquor licenses and seasonal ones here in town. But I'm concerned as to how we collect the data for this. You said just the Chamber of Commerce. Are there any other entities that involve in, how does the process work?
Well, I've reached out to a number of people that I could think of to do that. The federal census, obviously, is one key. But we also have to look at the estimations of day trippers and people that are coming from the islands and coming down to go to the beaches. So the only information.
Excuse me, do we get that from the steamship?
Well.
Information from them?
That's the problem. The problem is trying to get those numbers and them to be concrete. That's the hearing on Monday to actually try and document that information. It may not be possible to get all that information in a concrete form.
Thank you, Council Dagman. Council Rapkisetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Scali. How many pending permits or requests are before the licensing authority? Any?
Pending for seasonal licenses? We've had three requests in the last year. They have not applied because the commission did not certify the population yet.
Okay.
So they have to do that before March 1 of any year. They don't do it by March 1, they have to wait till the next year to do that.
And how many were issued last year?
We didn't, we haven't issued any seasonal licenses.
None at all?
In years, a number of years, right.
Okay, so they just get transferred, sold off?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other counselors? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. I do have a recall of the 80s and how we switched from seasonal licenses to year-round. And what people tend to forget is that when we had seasonal licenses, people were allowed to close and we didn't compete with each other in the off-season when the dining dollar wasn't here. And this is for all general food and liquor. And then what we started to realize is the people who had year-round licenses had an. asset that exceeded their actual real estate. So it was the wisdom of a previous legislative body in our area that thought we should move to a year-round license. And here we are, looking at something like this again, and here we need to apply a great deal of wisdom again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One moment, if I may, I'll follow up with the Vice President. Excuse me, Richard?
Mr. Scully, Richard, just one quick question. I've always been curious as to when licenses are awarded and they're held by a particular entity for a period of time, that because they own that license and they own that business, that if they decide they want to sell that business, what gives the business really its worth is the license? And why is it that when a license is sold, it does not revert back to the town to be then turned over to a potential client versus the owner of that business selling a license that he might have gotten for five thousand dollars, for a hundred thousand dollars, into another part of town? That's never made sense to me. How do we get our arms around that?
Well, there's a couple of issues there. One, the package licenses are set by population quota. That's what gives it the value, because it's a limited number. Our restaurant licenses are not set by quota of our population. We can issue as many as we want because of the special legislation that we have for that. And thus, the value of those licenses are really not as high as you would think. The package licenses have gone sky-high because of the limited number. And one of the precise questions you're asking, which I was asking the state, is if we do indeed even consider issuing seasonal licenses, can we say, once you're done with them, you turn them back to us? Why should you sell them?
That's my point.
Yeah. So that is one of the things I'm going to recommend to the commissioners, that if they do even consider this, which they may not, they should look at having them turned back in, should they leave or sell.
It sort of reflects the old days when taxi medallions were worth, you know, a half million dollars, but now with Uber and Lynx, they're worth nothing for all intents and purposes. I don't think that'll ever happen with a liquor license. But nonetheless, we're the town that's giving that person the opportunity to have the business. I can see them selling the business, but I struggle with making sense out of someone makes money off of a license that we basically own and control as the community, and we get nothing out of it.
May I ask a question? When I had my liquor license at the store, it was approved by the state and then came to the town, and the town granted it to me. The town was not the granting authority, it was the state that was. And that's, I think, what we're missing here, is that the town doesn't own these either. They're legislated at state level, as far as I understand.
Well, it's really kind of a dual role.
Yes.
It requires the city to grant, and then the state confirms that vote.
Right. The town moves, let's be clear, the town moves it to the state, the state is the final in most cases.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just a point of concern, I'll buy your beer.
Thank you, Director Scully. Thank you. Could I invite the town manager back, please? My vast array of paperwork here. I believe, Mr. Town Manager, we had completed our obligations under the charter, and we had a review process developed for you, and my predecessor, past president Steinhalber, actually had a chance to sit with you and go over the town manager performance evaluation. Could you speak to that issue about your events surrounding that obligation?
Yes. Actually, as per the Charter of the Town of Barnstable, section four-eight, the annual review of the town manager by the former town council president, Eric Steinhalber, and I met on December twenty-eighth. President Steinhalber, on behalf of the town council, prepared and delivered to me a written evaluation of my performance for two thousand and eighteen, and I want to thank the council for their thorough evaluation. And I make my commitment to continue to serve our community to the best of my ability as town manager of the Town of Barnstable. And I've given the town clerk that, just stating that it occurred when it did and that we met, and it was compliant with our charter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, as usual, perhaps a bit of modesty surrounds you, and when I look at the document, first, it did get stamped in, as you point out, on the twenty-eighth day of December at nine forty-three, so it's available for a public document. And we all have a copy of the summary points earned, and out of five, you get a four-point six. So that is a very glowing recommendation, and we're very appreciative of your professionalism and the staff that you brought through to assist us with our daily problems here. So thank you again.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Mr. Vice President, I ask if you would bring forward the minutes for review?
Yes. You all have in your packets the meeting minutes from December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. I will offer them for review and ratification to the council as written.
Do I have a second? Second, thank you. Any comments on the written word of December twentieth's meeting? Hearing none, I'd ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the council minute meeting of December twentieth as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? One abstention, please note the one abstention. Thank you very much. To my fellow councilors, communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. I look to my fellow councilors, would anybody like to bring a announcement forward? Wow, write this date down. Very good.
The holidays are over, there's not a whole lot going on in January.
You can see we went through a two-holiday weekend.
Exactly.
Thank you, councilors. With that in mind, I'd ask the manager to come forward. Please introduce his management staff that intends to proceed forward with the wastewater management plan presentation. Please prepare ourselves for forty minutes to an hour presentation on this lengthy topic that is well documented. Thank you.
That's right. If you need a break, now's the time to take it. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update of our comprehensive water management planning. Director Santos will be doing the majority of this presentation. He has here with him his, you know, key staff, but as we all know, starting with you all, to myself and all respective staff, we are engaged in a significant, maybe one of the most significant, planning processes that our community and all communities, certainly on Cape Cod, are challenged with, and that is planning to manage our water resources. We'll talk a lot about technical aspects, and I know there are various efforts going on right now, relevant to pieces of this, whether we're talking about public water supply and the challenges we have there, or we're looking at where a sewer expansion project is in design, or whether we're looking at regional opportunities with communities to our west or to our east. I think it's very important that we, as we move forward to our community, very patiently but thoroughly explain these issues to our public, have healthy debate about these issues, but also set timelines, not unlike the challenge we have with fish and wildlife and public water supply. You know, set clear objectives with timelines, knowing that they can be challenging but achievable, and go out there and measure ourselves, because these issues don't get simpler. They get more complicated with every year and every regulation and all that occurs. I've had very healthy discussions, as I alluded to earlier, with the Department of Environmental Protection. They were under the misunderstanding of what the Town of Barnstable is doing, relevant to the inter-messuaries regulation. I had extensive conversations with both Boston and with the region, relevant to not what the Board of Health is doing, that's a separate authority, but what we're doing, the Town of Barnstable municipality, relevant to its comprehensive water management planning. Because unfortunately, they had been informed that, by others, and I found that interesting, because I would think that you would first and foremost come to the town manager or city manager of a community and ask a question directly, being the signing authority for that community. But I don't know that that had happened in this case. So I had very good discussions, again, with both Boston and the Southeast Region, about where we are in our comprehensive water management planning. They know Barnstable to be a leader in this in the state. They know that Barnstable always steps up and works with all levels, state, county, local, to address these really difficult challenges that we have. So they found more recent communications to be quite interesting. So what I've done is I've initiated a relationship with, it'll involve EPA, it'll involve DEP, it'll involve myself and others that I designate from the municipal government, to start an intergovernmental technical advisory group, so that there won't be misinformation provided, that they will be talking to me directly. We will meet on a regular basis, and they will be informed, as you will be, as we progress on this. And there won't be misinformation being put out there. So that was a very, I thought that was a very positive thing. It was somewhat surprising to me to have the conversation, but these are big efforts that we're moving forward with. And so I expect that to happen in the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen, and I expect it to continue at a minimum quarterly. Myself and Director Santos will be the two primary people, but I'm sure others. The last time I was involved in this, which I was directly involved in this, in the earlier planning process, I mean, this went on for a long time. It involved everybody, EPA, DEP, CZM, MIPA, you could just go through the list, everybody in the, certainly in the regulatory Cape Cod Commission, et cetera, et cetera. And so I expect that the same sort of discussion will occur, and hopefully, from a governmental standpoint, it's not limited to this, there'll be many, many discussions, but it's very important that we have those formal relationships with federal government, state government, county government, local government, as we proceed. So at this point, I'll stop my introduction and ask Director Santos to come up and go into the details of where we are in the more technical side of this effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Here comes our director of DPW, and if you could acknowledge your supporting staff.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. My role primarily tonight is to present a lot of information that I think you'll find valuable, but it's information that's been put together over the last several years, three years really, by a very talented staff that I have, and I'd like to introduce those folks. And I think we're fortunate to have staff that are engineers, that have worked in the private sector, that have extensive education and experience in wastewater. This staff, I would put up against any consulting company out there, and that's why we've been doing this work ourselves, for the most part, since two thousand and fifteen, when councillor, then-president Raprasetti, established the Water Resources Advisory Committee and set us on this goal of addressing the two-oh-eight wastewater plan with the Cape Cod Commission. So with me tonight, I have Assistant Director Steen, that's the newly bald guy here, and that's not from the work I make him do. As a moment ago, the manager introduced interim town engineer, Amanda Ruggiero. But also, because I had to move Amanda Ruggiero from assistant town engineer to town engineer, I needed to fill that spot, and I have promoted, on the interim basis, Griffin to, both Griffin to the assistant town engineer interim position. And he is our newest staff member and has been doing a great job. So without them, I wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be nearly as far as we are. For the next couple of hours... No, really. Here we go. So basically, we're going to talk about what's the problem we're trying to address, and then what plans do we have in place at this point to address those problems? And you can see some of the subtitles here. And I will try to go at a reasonable pace, not too fast, there's a lot of material to cover, some of which you've seen before in other briefings. Some of you are new to the council since those previous briefings, so some of this you may not have seen. So what is the problem we're trying to address in wastewater? Okay, we put waste basically into the ground, either through our wastewater treatment plant or our septic systems. So what happens when you do that? There are results from that, there are consequences from that, and as you can see them here, impaired embayments. Embayments are basically saltwater, bodies of water that are restricted or that are closed or that have limited inlet outlet. So you're familiar with our estuaries along the coast, both north and south throughout Cape Cod. Wastewater impairs those embayments. We're concerned about groundwater quality. Again, we're putting wastewater into the soil, what's beneath that soil is groundwater, so whatever remains in that wastewater effluent, regardless of how it's treated, is now in the groundwater, and that can create problems, as you'll see in a few minutes. Pond water quality, okay? The embayments is a saltwater issue, ponds are also impacted by wastewater. Failing, expensive septic systems, failing septic systems that have exposure to wastewater on the ground surface, or that don't properly treat wastewater, or that are very expensive, prohibitively expensive. And we've seen some septic systems in the forty and fifty thousand dollar range for a single home. Economic development is a significant consideration in wastewater planning efforts, and how you work with your planners and zoning and infrastructure to develop the town as you choose to see fit. And then finally, we have new flood zone maps from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and those changed the formula on where septic systems are and whether they're impacted by storm surge. And then finally, there are regulatory requirements, for example, Title V, the Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Act, these all have regulatory requirements relative to wastewater. So I mentioned a few moments ago, the two-oh-eight program. Two-oh-eight is a section of the Clean Water Act, and basically says that cities and towns and municipalities are required to meet water quality standards from point and non-point sources. So wastewater treatment plant being a point source, you know, single pipe discharge, non-point sources are runoff, storm water, and septic systems. And so we are required, in our coastal water bodies, to meet standards. So in the marine environment, which is what most of what two-oh-eight program is looking at, and the two-oh-eight program was initiated and overseen by the Cape Cod Commission, and we are still in that process, and there are some specific deliverables that we have to meet, and we've been doing that in accordance with that requirement. The next one is the submission of a plan, and we'll talk about that closer to the end. But in our marine environment, the nutrient that we're concerned with is nitrogen. So nitrogen, and very quickly, what the problem is, is nitrogen basically over-fertilizes the water body. And when it does that, you get algae growth, which can be observed on the surface, it's not very appealing. But also, when that algae dies off, you got microbes that eat that algae, they consume oxygen to do that, it reduces the oxygen in the water, and it kills the good things, which is the eel grass, which is in our estuaries. And if you look at some of the maps of eel grass die-offs in the last fifty years, it's just astonishing what in the nineteen fifties there was compared to what there is today. And eel grass is suggestive of a very healthy coastal environment, and this is where we get treatment for, you know, some contaminants, you get protection from storm surge, but also, this is your nursery for finfish and shellfish. Other origins of nitrogen, not just wastewater, as you can see here, fertilizers, storm water, atmospheric deposition, there's nitrogen in our atmosphere. So when it rains, and we don't have a great way to control that, but fortunately, it's not a major component of our nitrogen in, on the Cape. And then finally, sediment release, that's where in... And then finally, sediment release, that's where in saltwater bodies and freshwater bodies, sediments can hold on to the nutrients and nitrogen, and under certain conditions, they can release that. So that, in the case of Mill Pond, we'll talk about that, you've got nitrogen being released into our surface water body from sediments. So other issues of concern, in freshwater ponds, phosphorus does what nitrogen does in saltwater bodies. It's the nutrient that tends to create the algae blooms and tends to cause eutrophication, which is this advanced nutrient enhancement of a water body, so not a good thing. Then contaminants of emerging concern. You know, this, Al Gore had a movie a while back called An Inconvenient Truth, and he was talking about global warming. But this is going to be our new inconvenient truth. This is really going to be a problem, and you can see it with, as Town Manager Ellis was talking about, with the PFOS and those standards. That's just one. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of these emerging contaminants, and most of them, there is no really understanding of their, what their impacts are to human health and the environment. So you're going to hear a lot more about this, and you can see some of the things there, pharmaceuticals, healthcare products, you know, hormones, these come from our body through wastewater, but they accumulate in the environment. So as far as regulations and driving what we do, one of the primary ones, and this was the driver of the 208 program, is the Massachusetts Estuaries Program, and you'll hear this called MEP. And this was a collaboration between UMass Dartmouth and the Mass DEP, and where they looked at the estuaries in southeastern Massachusetts, and there are 89 of them, and what they basically did was they created a model which allows them to input all of the things in an environment, in a particular watershed, all the conditions that either cause nitrogen, you know, the wastewater inputs, water use, all these kind of things, and then things that attenuate nitrogen, and develop a total maximum daily load for every embayment in the region. And those total maximum daily loads, that's the standard that the town will be required to meet. So basically, there's a sampling place in every one of these water bodies where we have to regularly sample and look at the nitrogen. And our plan needs to show that we will get below that total maximum daily load by the actions that we take. So that's really the driver there. I mentioned eelgrass, you know, this is the canary in the coal mine. If there's good eelgrass, then you know you've got a good, healthy water body. If there's none, there's something going on, it's likely with nutrients. So the Cape and the whole southeastern mass is divided by watersheds. What a watershed is simply, it's the land area on which rain falls and contributes that rain to a water body. So what you have here, and I'll call them out on the far left, is Pompanesett Bay, which is in gray, and then the Three Bays watershed, Centerville River watershed, Halls Creek watershed, it's not labeled there, Lewis Bay watershed, and then Barnstable Harbor on the north. And on Cape Cod, all of our water that falls on this peninsula becomes, for the most part, groundwater. The surface waters we have are actually driven by groundwater. And so if you look at that blue line in the middle, we have Barnstable Harbor to the north and the other watersheds to the south, so water at that line, below the line is flowing south, so it's almost like a pitched roof. So in that line is the center of that roof, so any water falling below it is going to the Cape Cod, to the south coast, and to the north is the Cape Cod Bay. And so that's, but the way, and the numbers you see here, and these are nitrogen removal, what percent of the nitrogen in these watersheds do we have to remove to meet those total maximum daily loads? And you can see, in Three Bays watershed, we've got to remove 60% of the nitrogen that's there today. Now, plus 100% of anything new, okay? That's just 60% of what's there. Anything new, you can't put any in. And all of these watersheds, except Halls Creek, that's a plus 57, what that means is there's capacity in that watershed to take nitrogen without going above that total maximum daily load at that Sentinel Station. That's the only watershed that's like that. Every other watershed in Barnstable, except Barnstable Harbor, we've just gone through as well, there's one sub watershed, and that's what that 65% is. So now, the way you manage this, these are overall averages for each of those watershed, but watersheds are broken down into subwatersheds, and I know this is busy, but the point of this is really to show you that each watershed, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, the whole puzzle is contained with a number of jigsaw pieces, and each one of those little pieces has a removal amount. So the way you, the way the model works, and you get to the Sentinel Station and meeting that standard, is by reducing nitrogen, as you see in these subwatersheds. The reason you can't do it on the big watershed, so if you take, for example, the Three Bays watershed, and it says you have to remove 60%, well, if you removed 30% up in the top left by doing something, you're not necessarily going to meet that TMDL. So you have to model it, you have to show it, our plan has to work based on the subwatershed. And you can see how many of those, particularly out in the west of the town, are 100%. 100% of what's there now, we won't meet. Even if you did, most of everything that's there, if you didn't meet 100% in one of those subwatersheds, the model says you're not going to meet it. So this is how we manage the plan, this is how we built the plan. And you can see the some areas are small amounts as well, you know, 1%, 9%. But if you look at this map, what this does, if you kind of ignore all the lines and you just look at the colors, it tells you where our problems are. Okay, the dark green areas, from, again, from nitrogen standpoint, those dark green areas are where we've got to address. And you'll see in the plan, those are the areas that we start addressing first. It helps us prioritize. So now that we've talked about what the problem is, let's look at the plans. And the way we start plans is by looking at needs. What are the needs? And the plan is, how are you going to, what alternatives are available to solve those needs? So the needs, there are really five basic needs. And sanitary needs, that's basically for public health, how do you dispose of wastewater? And that's concerns there, and this is Title V and on-site systems, is soil conditions, depth of groundwater, what variances that are involved. The Board of Health is the variance granting authority, and if a house had a cesspool, like many of them did, and they need to put a septic system in, but they don't meet the current standard, they're not going to shut down the house down, they're going to usually allow them some kind of variance from a setback or depth of groundwater. But these aren't necessarily good things for the environment. Convenience and aesthetics, that's basically the issue of, with a variance, you can put in mounded systems, they're allowed, but they're not very attractive, particularly in a coastal area where we pride ourselves on being such a beautiful Cape Cod and peninsula, mounded septic systems rarely look good, and some of them have walls built around them. And no matter how many little green flowers you put on top, they're still a mounded septic system. And then I mentioned earlier, the expense of some of these septic systems. Needs, protecting groundwater and water supplies. Groundwater, because it obviously feeds surface waters, but the water supplies, obviously, we, in Barnstable in particular, but almost all of the Cape water supplies, except for one specific water supply in Falmouth, are groundwater supplies. All of our drinking water comes from the ground, which is exactly where we're putting all of our wastewater. So we want to look very closely when we develop our plans and needs as to where are our current water supply systems and wells, and where's our wastewater going in? So that's something we look at. And then, again, those same contaminants of concern from the wastewater nitrogen and the CECs. Want to protect surface waters, both freshwater and saltwater from nutrients. And then we want to be able to enable economic growth in a way that the community wants and desires through the management of wastewater. What does a wastewater plan do? In this case, you've heard the term Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, that's what the state calls them, it's basically what we're doing. How are we comprehensively, as a town, addressing our wastewater needs for the immediate and the long-term future? So obviously, the water quality requirements come from the standards, and then it identifies solutions. What alternatives are available to meet those needs that you've identified in the previous step? And there's really three ways to do that, with non-traditional approaches, and we'll talk about those, you can see some of them listed here, I'll talk about them in detail. Traditional approaches, which is sewer and wastewater treatment plant, and then management. You can control wastewater by not allowing it in a certain area. I mean, that's an appropriate technique of controlling wastewater and meeting your standards. Plan also will include, you know, what are we going to build? So that's the capital improvements. And then finally, and very importantly, is how are you going to fund this? So we embarked on this plan with the Water Resources Advisory Committee, and we've built on that. We got to a point, they presented their report to you all, but from then, we've been working at, really at breakneck speed on lots of things, and presenting this information to you all, to different groups, we've met with community groups. And so the plan must meet the regulatory requirement, that's that first bullet. We've got to do at least, you know, what they say, you've got to meet those standards. But that doesn't mean that's what the plan has to be, just do that. There's lots of reasons we may want to do more than that, and there's nothing that keeps us from doing that. But at least you've got to meet those regulatory requirements. You know, it says organic up there, because it can be what we all, you all, want it to be, okay? This, you know, I don't, we're helping you from a technical standpoint, here's what you've got to do to satisfy the regulators and keep us out of court and keep us out of trouble and keep us in healthy water bodies. But beyond that, you know, we need your input, and that's why a meeting like this tonight is important, and more of these as we move ahead are important. Flexibility is important in the plan, and one reason, one way we've done that is, as I mentioned, we are doing the bulk of this work when we can, in-house with our staff, really up through preliminary design of the sewer expansion projects. By doing that, I can do it cheaper, and I'd estimate between when we started this in 2015 to now, we've probably saved the town on the order of $500,000 or $600,000 on consultant fees, just by keeping it in-house. And we get a better product, I think, but we get it quicker, much quicker, because we can respond immediately. Consultants, you have to get a scope of work, and you have to ask for a price, and you have to negotiate the price, and there's change orders, and so we have, we're much more flexible that way, and also able to, you know, change with technology, what we see coming down the road. And you'll see in our plan that we're thinking about that, and being able to adapt to technology changes might allow us to minimize costs in the future, and in fact, even eliminate some parts of this program to the tune of, you know, tens of millions of dollars of savings or more. So the process by which we've come to the place we are now, which is where we have, we have a plan and we're working on, I'll talk about all the details of that, but as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we collaborated with the Water Resources Advisory Committee, which was a town council-generated, directed effort with our town staff, including Public Works and our development, planning and development staff, also with DEP. We, our regulator, we said, well, let's invite them to the table while we develop this thing. I'd rather hear now, while we're doing the development, if they got an issue with something, rather than later on, after we put all this evidence into it and send it up to them, they say, oh, by the way, that's not really going to work out for you. And that was very helpful, to have their input. And some of the things where it's important, things like the use of alternative technologies, what do they feel about that? Phasing, you know, we've, you know, we've put out a program that's, you know, three 20-year phases, a 60-year plan, they generally try not to do that, they're looking at, you know, a 20-year plan, a 40-year plan, but we laid out a way that we think is it appropriate to manage this issue. So the way we did that, did this whole program, and how did we come up with our needs, we actually looked on a lot-to-lot basis, every single lot in town, and we looked at the things you see here, those variances, soils, groundwater, we looked at all the water supply wells for all the water purveyors in town, looked at their water quality in their wells, where they have monitoring wells, and what's coming to those wells, understanding where there are nitrogen issues, because nitrogen's a problem in drinking water, as well as in water bodies. Surface waters, I mentioned, we looked at ponds, we did a pond study through the Water Resources Advisory Committee, looked at the quality of, I think about 80 ponds, there are 184 ponds in Barnstable, which you may not know, but there's a lot of ponds and a lot of surface water. We looked at the issue of mounded septic systems and all the things I mentioned a few minutes ago. So what Amanda did, basically, and working with GIS here in town, our own GIS folks, is we created our own model, we call it a tool, and we inputted all this information, how much water every lot uses, and how much, whether there's septic systems. We just put this all into a GIS database, which is the beauty of geographic information systems, is you can take data and turn it into graphic depictions, and it's like voila. So there's a layer of septic systems, there's a layer, and, you know, the data is in layers. And so what we did is we stacked these, like, okay, you've got high groundwater in this part of town, but we want to have economic development in this part of town, and we have failed septic systems here, and water supply issues here, and when you stack them, it shows you where the problems are graphically. So it's like, okay, well, now that helps us prioritize the plan. Where you have all this stacking and there's no colors, well, you really don't have a problem there. So if you look at West Barnstable, or a lot of places on the north side, you don't have all these colors stacked up, because you don't have these issues, and hence, you don't really need to take an active role in solving a problem there, there really isn't a need. So that tool has been very valuable, and the beauty of that is, anytime we make a change, and that's part of this flexibility, so if you all agree that, you know, we want to do something else, I can plug that all into the tool, and, not me, but the staff can plug that all into the tool and say, yeah, that'll work, we'll still meet our TMDL. And then after we get our plan set, we'll send our plan back to University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, SMAST, and we'll say, you run your model again, the one that you originally calculated the TMDLs for, and you run your model with our plan, and so they'll check that off, yeah, it meets, it's going to work, because they've got to confirm that. I think we're pretty confident about it, but that's just something that DEP and the Cape Cod Commission are going to require, that we do that checkoff. So here's, when you layer that all up, this is the graphic that identifies the needs in Barnstable. And you can see that the gray area in the east, that's sewed area, so that's not a need, we're just pointing out that's what's sewed already currently. The red is required for nitrogen removal. So if you go think back to when I presented that nitrogen, how much nitrogen we've got to remove, where those big green blobs are, well, they're now red, that's exactly what the red is. So we've got to remove nitrogen from those areas. We have economic development, we worked with our planning and development staff, Elizabeth Jenkins, she was part of this, we've talked to the town management, and the yellow areas are areas that have been identified to increase economic development. You can see over off Yarmouth Road, the yellow in the middle is Independence Park, right in the dead center, the corridor along Route 28, those are the areas for economic development. On the purple, on the far west side, one of the things we have done is, DEP is moving towards watershed permits, not just town permits, but permitted watershed solutions, which could include several towns. So we have actually signed, and you agreed with, intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Sandwich and Mashpee, looking at this western part of town, because it might be to our benefit to pay possibly money to Sandwich for a solution in their town that benefits us, because the water's moving into our town. We haven't worked out any of the details of what that might be now, but what we have is a framework to have those discussions, if that's something that we want to do. And then ponds and well areas are the areas in blue. So these are the needs, and again, this helps us prioritize how we move ahead for a plan. So we've done a lot in the last several years, and I just put it all up here so you can see, went through 2015, really just about three years ago, when we started meeting and really started digging into this, creating that model, you can see all the things we've done. The first 208 requirement was submitting a bookends plan to the Cape Cod Commission, we did that on time. And then you see all our data gap filling, and all of our technical work, and I'm not going to go through each one of these, but you can see that we have not backed... backed off. You know, we're revving high on getting this plan ready and submitted to the Cape Cod Commission, to you all, to the regulatory agencies, so that we can move ahead. And what I'm going to be talking about in just a moment is all those things that we are doing now, that are considered moving ahead. But what we haven't, you know, you can see the checkmarks, and then down at the bottom, the things that still need to come, is where we are now. Summer, fall, 2018, we begin public outreach and feedback. We're talking to you, we've talked to community groups, we're talking, we've done a Channel 18 film. We want to educate people, so that people understand what's coming and what this is going to look like. So, right now, we're dredging, dredging Sampson's Island and the Three Bays and Kewa Bay. That's an active project that's underway as I speak, well, during the day, anyway, and that is going to have an impact, not only on navigation, but it also has an impact on nitrogen removal. And because of flushing, the more we flush out these embayments, which are constricted, the more you can get that nitrogen out in the ocean where it's not going to be a problem. So, this winter, we see on here, we've got to start looking at financial options and opportunities. That has to be part of the plan that goes forward. So, we've got to, we, as a town, have to wrestle with that, and when we present our technical solution, it's, okay, well, how are you going to pay for it? That's part of this. So, in the spring, we hope to get the final draft of the town council. In the summer, getting our draft to the Cape Cod Commission for their input. And then, finally, in the fall, we're proposing that the draft, Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, goes to DEP. You know, we've had all these time, these schedule points right along since 2015. We've done very well. I think we've made all the dates that we proposed, and we continue to do that, and we will continue to work with you all for a plan that does that. I mentioned a few minutes ago, our plan, again, this is our technical plan, subject to change, input, and being molded, but three phases, and you can see three 20-year phases. And so, this is the phasing plan, again, simply, simple cartoon, but effective, I think, in delineating the areas. Phase one are the areas in red, and, you know, what we're addressing here is, some of this makes sense because it addresses not only an environmental need, so protecting Waukeahut Lake, protecting Long Pond, addressing sewer expansion. Some of this makes sense, that we have a system, and you can march out from that, radially, and you actually, in fact, have approved those projects in our last capital plan, looking at some of those areas in red already underway. And the yellow is phase two, that would be the 20, 40 years, and the blue is phase three. Our hope is that through the use of innovative technologies, which will continue to be refined and improved over the next 20 and 40 years, and we can adapt our plan, and hopefully we don't have to do that, phase three. And you'll see what kind of money that results in. So, in our, this is our phases. This is how much wastewater we're going to capture, and how much nitrogen we're going to remove by phase. And you can see that another aspect that's important to engineers is that this is feasible, this is doable. So, we've pretty much, you know, it's like a third, a third, a third, maybe a little less in the end, but we've tried to break it up into three equal pieces. Again, totally fungible. You can, we can do more or less, but this is, this is our approach, to solve the technical issue by keeping the costs and how much work we're doing in reasonable chunks. And you can see that you've got the bulk of our nitrogen being addressed in phase one in the first 20 years, in that 40%. Now, this is conservative, as you can see here on the slide, because we haven't taken any credit for non-traditional solutions. And those are alternative septic systems, dredging, wetlands, some of the things I'll be talking about in a minute, because they haven't necessarily been approved by the regulators, say, okay, if you install that technology, we'll give you 20 points credit. They haven't done that yet, but we can't wait, you know? One of the things we want to do is make sure we exhaust all opportunities and all the things we can do before we start putting pipes in the ground, and sewers in the ground. So, it makes a lot of sense to address innovative technologies, alternative technologies. And what we're doing is, we're moving ahead with those, and there'll be a couple of slides about that, because we believe that we're not just going to wait for them to say what kind of credit we're going to get. We're going to prove it. We're going to put the technology in the ground, we're going to monitor it, and we're going to say, hey, DEP, here's what we've done, and this is what we want credit for. And we think that's a much, much better approach, and get to the solution more quickly as So, there've been some interesting opportunities recently that have kind of molded the plan, changed the plan a little for us in our thinking. One of them is, thanks to Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, we've been talking a lot with Joint Base Cape Cod. Okay, what they have there is a lot of land area, but they have a wastewater treatment plant that they're trying to get rid of. It's run by the Air Force, and they have a very small use of it, it's been there a long time. And that plant treats in the southern part of the base, and they pump the effluent up near the canal, all the way in the northern part of the base. If this is working, anyway, they have a forced main up to get rid of the effluent. But we, there's a group that's meeting now, Sandwich, Mashpee, Falmouth, and we are beginning to engage with that group, to look at opportunities to have possibly wastewater go from the western part of Barnstable. It's only four or five miles, okay? If you want to treat and bring it all the way back here, you know, collection and distribution of water and wastewater is very expensive. So, as much as you can shorten those pipe runs, that's going to be a lot of money savings. So, you know, we're not sure where this is going to go. You'll see in your agenda, there's an item to fund some feasibility, looking at this. We met with the fellow that's heading that up now, he's the DPW Director in Falmouth, met with him today, and they're very excited to bring us on board, I think others are. I think they're interested in having our talent and our expertise at the table. And, see, one of the things that is a problem, or an issue, that we have to wrestle with, I wouldn't say it's a problem, as an engineer, everything is an opportunity, is disposal, okay? We got, we have, we can treat, but you have to dispose. And when you're disposing of wastewater, no matter how well you treat it, within reason, you still get nitrogen in it. So, you're still creating a problem, much less of a problem. So, we're going to have to wrestle with, as a community, where we're going to put our treated effluent from the treatment systems. So, ideally, getting it out of Barnstable and up there may be a great way to do that, where it's much less of an impact. And the reason those effluent is disposed of at the base up by the canal is because that's a 200-foot sand filter bed, eventually goes into the canal, and it's gone. And that was put in about 20 years ago. So, this also provides additional opportunities for us to start thinking about our wastewater needs and searing in the western part of town, makes it much more economical, possibly. So, this is something that we're looking forward to. It's just some figures about the facility they have there, it's small. I think, basically, that would be torn down, and a new facility would be built, it's really very little capacity in what's there, but there's a lot of land area. So, there's opportunity there, and we need to try to get all those opportunities. And so, this caused us to think about expanding into the Kewa Bay area, and here's some staging that we might suggest in Kewa Bay. Now, one of the things, when we first looked at the intermunicipal agreement with Mashpee and Sandwich, was solving the Pappanessit Bay problem. And we can do that, but the problem is, and this was brought to our attention, that Shoestring Bay, which is part of that, if you solve the Pappanessit Bay problem to the west, you still have a problem in Shoestring Bay, even though you meet your TMDL, okay, and technically you've solved the problem, but you've got people who live around and enjoy a water resource which has problems. You've left problems. So, we've adjusted our thinking to start moving in that way, and that's aligning with this JBCC, Joint Base Cape Cod, opportunity, as well as some other things that are coming down the road. So, this is just some, that additional area we've added for Kewa Bay. You can see nitrogen loading removed. It's significant, and made it over several stages, obviously, like most of our wastewater planning. You want to get the backbone in, you want to get the major infrastructure in, you know, down Route 28, down Main Street, down Putnam, and then you start moving from there, as you start implementing and connecting homes and businesses. So, some of the non-traditional projects we have underway. Right now, we're focusing that effort in the Three Bays area, and you can see here, there's two oval red circles. One at the bottom is the Kewa Bay dredge, which I mentioned a few months ago, which is ongoing, which is on schedule to be complete by January 15th. And that's a three-year project. This is the first of three phases of that, that's getting ready to be finished, about 40,000 cubic yards of material being removed. And then, the other is the Marson's Mills River System and Mill Pond, and how that comes down into Prince Cove and North Bay. So, here's a list of some of the non-traditional methods that we're considering and have in various points of planning currently. Obviously, the dredging is ongoing now. That's a bonus for a number of reasons, as I mentioned, including about a 12% reduction in nitrogen in the area of the inlet cut there. Mill Pond dredging, this is, we'll talk about in a minute in more detail. Pan and Cranberry bogs, they can be utilized as nitrogen-reducing treatment systems, as will be shown. Aquaculture in Warren's Cove, which is a cove in that Three Bay system, north of North Bay. Use of alternative septic systems, permeable reactive barriers, and you don't have to know what they are right now, I'm going to touch on them, stormwater treatment. So, here's just an interesting graphic of the Sampson's Island, of the Kewa Bay Cut dredging. You can see how this is built up from sand accretion. You know, sand moves in our environment, it does it on Sandy Neck, it does it all down the east coast. It, so it moves and it builds up in some places, and it takes it away from other places, and it happens to build it up here. And you can see the difference between 1938 and 2011, from the blue to the red, how much that's built up. And that little white part up in the corner, that's the other side, that's Riley's Beach, basically, on the other side, and you have very little room there, which makes it very dangerous for navigation purposes, but also really restricts the flow and flushing for that water body for nitrogen removal. So, this is just a plan showing, on the far left there, you can see the three cuts, which is the three phases. And then, on the far east side, I don't know why this thing doesn't work. Oh, there it is. On this side here, this is where we're bringing the sand to, because that part of the island is losing sand, and it gets built up at the cut, so we're bringing it back. Unfortunately, it's a cycle that continues forever and ever, but there's not a whole lot we can do about it, other than, other than do this. And what you don't want to do is have, have that breach, and then you'd have two islands and water coming through, and that could be a real problem. So, here's an interesting graphic. By doing the dredging at the Kewa Bay Cut, down at the far left end, right there, okay, this is where that's going on right now. What this blue is, it shows, this is nitrogen reduction in Kewa Bay as a result of doing that. And that's what I mentioned, about 12% reduction. But what's interesting is that in the sub watershed in this area, okay, contributing water to here, we only need about a 20% reduction in that sub watershed. So, you already got a good amount of that by just doing dredging. So, what, what we're doing now is, because of this result, and results we've had in the Senneval River and other places, we are now writing a scope of work, and this would have to do with a consultant, because it takes a very highly skilled group, like the Woods Hole Group, who's done this work for us before. We're asking them to evaluate the whole Three Bay system, so what would dredging in that whole system do, and model that. So, how much nitrogen improvement can we get by doing dredging? Dredging certain areas, dredging different parts of that? And the more we can, more nitrogen we can take out by doing that, is less we have to do with sewers. So, it's a far more economical approach. So, that study is going to get underway shortly, and, again, as I mentioned, let's exhaust what we can, so let's look at that. And so, it makes a lot of sense to understand what additional dredging, we see what it'll do in Mill Pond, and maybe what it'll do in the bay system here. And speaking of the Mill Pond dredging, so, this is at the intersection of 149 and Route 28. And what that pond formerly, you can see, was about 10 feet deep, almost 10 feet deep. It's now a foot or less in some areas. That's all silted in, coming down the river just from land. This is silt and sand washing off bogs and down into the river for, you know, decades and decades and decades. But the problem is, when you do that, you reduce the pond's ability to attenuate nitrogen. Ponds naturally will go through a process where they reduce the nitrogen up to about, which says here, healthy ponds, about 50% removal of nitrogen in a pond. Well, right now, you've got about 10% happening there. So, the theory is that by removing, by dredging that pond back to its original depth, or, you know, close to that, you'll have your nitrogen go back up to the 30% to 50% range. Again, less you have to do with septic systems and wastewater systems, and given that's, frankly, taken probably 100 years or more, you've got a lot of time there and benefit of treating nitrogen in a natural system. So, we're working on the permitting for that right now. We have a consultant involved, we've done sampling, we're working with DEP and other state agencies, to try to convince them that this makes a lot of sense, and that it's protective, and it's a smart thing to do, and we're going to be, you know, dogged about that. What, the estimate is about 60,000 cubic yards of material in there. So, that can be an expensive thing to get, you know, any of our dredging projects, all the cost is in the getting rid of the dredge material. So, that's where we're going to put our thinking caps on, and try to come up with the best way to address that. So, the cheaper it is for us to get rid of that material, the cheaper the whole project's going to be, and the more cost-effective it is to be removing nitrogen from that system. And Cranberry bogs, these are some of the ideas that we're seriously looking at. There are a number of bogs in that Marson's Mills system, and bogs that are potentially, that we could use as treatment systems, that could be purchased, and there's a number of things that could be done. They can be converted to ponds, as I just talked about. Ponds give you a nitrogen attenuation, so if there's a pond rather than a Cranberry bog, you can get some reduction there. Converting them to wetlands, wetlands are another system. If you've got flow through a wetland, you get nitrogen reduction, you get nitrogen uptake in wetland plants. And then, finally, the use of maybe floating wetlands on a water body, which is another thing. So, we're actively pursuing these, these are in the permitting stages, like we are with the Mill Pond, but definitely an idea that we're working towards. I mentioned Warren's Cove, this is an area which is silted in, and really, there's no shellfish that grow in there. The idea, working with our natural resources folks, is to possibly dredge that out and have that become a nursery for shellfish, that supplies nursery stock to other known and already established shellfishing areas. Not only does it provide the shellfish for those areas as juvenile shellfish, but also it's taking nitrogen out, so it's a treatment system as well. And you can see that up to 15% of the nitrogen that they encounter can be addressed by mussels and oysters and clams, and we're looking very seriously at that in-house. Some of the other non-traditional opportunities that we're looking at and that we have underway, PRBs are permeable reactive wall. Basically, it's just, you drop a curtain down into the ground, curtain-like, but basically, something that the water goes through, and what's in that is a system, either, you know, they have wood chips, they have iron filings, they have different things that you can put in the ground, that as the water goes through, it treats it. So, we've, I'm sorry, we've looked at that, at Prince Cove area, and it's got to be the right conditions. They're not, they're not going to be able to be used everywhere, but there may be conditions where it makes sense. And one of them is, I have horse farms here. Horse farms have a tremendous amount of nitrogen coming off them, as you might imagine. And, and there are actually a number of horse farms in, in that And there are actually a number of horse farms in that watershed. So maybe the use of a PRB is surrounding a horse farm with PRBs, so all that nitrogen from the urea can go through this treatment system before it gets into that river system. Sounds like a great idea, something that we're looking at. We're putting in an alternative septic system, we've designed it, it's going to be constructed soon at Prince Cove, and this is a septic system that actually will collect, it's almost like a tight tank, but there is an overflow, but we're removing all of the waste that currently is going into the ground, almost directly into Prince Cove, is now being pulled out of there. So significant for one location, in the big scheme, it's small, but if it works, and you can recreate this in many other places, it could have a big impact. And then finally, one of the ideas that we've talked about with Cape Cod Academy, and the reason is because they have a lot of people there, and a lot of people using the restroom, is possibly urine-diverting toilets, where, again, nitrogen's coming from that urine, the biggest component, and if you can get that separated out and removed, then you're going to get a big knock in nitrogen there. Stormwater, we've been doing a lot of work with stormwater, some of the new EPA regs for, it's called MS4, which is looking at stormwater by regulation in all the communities in Massachusetts. But stormwater systems basically contribute nitrogen and contaminants, metals to runoff and to our water bodies. And so the MS4 requires a comprehensive survey of all of our stormwater systems in town, particularly those that have direct discharge to, and we don't do that anymore, but there are systems out there that have direct discharge to water bodies, and those will be addressed, and we'll have to have best management practices applied. Right now, we've got a very significant stormwater project. We got a grant from the U.S. EPA, also from Coastal Zone Management, well over $500,000, and we're looking at designing and installing stormwater systems, stormwater best management practices in the Three Bay system, and several of those actually are in construction right now, and you can see a couple of them here, Ropes Beach, Cordwood Landing. This is where we're using wetland plants, bioswales, these are biological treatment systems. Stormwater, particularly the first flush from a runoff event, goes through these systems, and those contaminants get uptake-treated, and then they're not going into the water body. So they benefit for recreation, they benefit for finfish and shellfish, and these are not particularly expensive means. Again, you're accumulating all these benefits by doing all these different non-traditional approaches, and when you start adding them up, they're going to make a real difference. And I won't read this, but you can see some, and I just mentioned them, you can see some of the results from stormwater systems, both short and long-term, and the intent, basically, is to improve water quality, to change how we manage stormwater, and wastewater as well, because the way it used to be was, you'd just collect it, and on a place like Cape Cod, you put it underground somewhere, and it's gone. Well, we've learned that it's not gone, it's in our drinking water, and ends up in our estuaries. So the traditional projects that are underway, and these have been preliminary design funded by this council in our last capital program, and this is the Addicks Lane area, so this is Route 132 in Addicks Lane, at the new Cape Cod Five headquarters. What we've done there is, was a great partnership, where they are building a pump station for us at their cost, and we're going to take it over, we're going to operate it and maintain it. It's under construction now, and that allows us to provide sewer solutions to all that area in pink, which not only protects shallow pond, but it also solves some significant on-site septic system problems in Old Strawberry Hill Road, as well as provide some economic development opportunities along Route 132. That preliminary design is underway. Long Pond area sewer expansion, that's the area in green there, around, surrounding Long Pond. Again, this helps water quality in Long Pond, helps water quality in the Senneville River, and there are some other density issues that we're addressing by expanding our sewer there. Finney's Lane sewer expansion, that's in the yellow, that's between the Addicks Lane one I mentioned first and the green Long Pond. This addresses water quality in Quocket Lake, and also, it's in the watershed of the Senneville River, and helps to reduce nitrogen in the Senneville River. And this is very busy, but the takeaway, if you look to the far right up top in red, is you can see the kind of nitrogen, and this is the whole point of this, is target nitrogen removal, and in the Senneville River watershed, we're removing 41% of the nitrogen that's required to be removed by these couple of projects that are underway already. So as I mentioned, a couple of opportunities that have come up recently, this is another, okay, as you obviously know, Vineyard Wind, their proposal to come ashore at Covel's Beach, and bring an electrical transmission line all the way up into Independence Park, substation. Well, this is a perfect opportunity, when they're digging up those roads, for us to put in sewer, because we have needs in those areas. And you can see, what that allows us to do is not only that Long Pond area, which I talked about a minute ago, but it allows us to get into that area between Long Pond and Craigville Beach, Craigville Beach Road, Long Beach, those areas in red, which affect Lake Elizabeth, Lily Pond, Long Beach Road. This is an area where we have velocity zone issues, where ultimately, all those septic systems are going to have to be replaced, and this provides a sewer solution there, and a significant part of that cost is going to be borne by Vineyard Wind having dug up those roads. So that's a great opportunity for us, and we're reviewing their designs, and we are seeking funds through, appropriation requests through the council tonight for this as well. The two other projects we have going that are very important, as I mentioned, we have disposal capacity issue and disposal location issue. You approved at the last capital improvements program in the spring for the Water Pollution Control Facility, is looking at a capacity study for effluent disposal, and basically, what that is, is how much disposal capacity is there at our current wastewater treatment plant? There's been a number of studies over the years that have suggested that it has a limitation, and it's less than the capacity of the plant. So we can treat more, but we can't run, we can't actually do the treatment, because we have nowhere to put the effluent. So this effluent study, and we're working with DEP for their, make sure they buy in upfront, we're kind of once and for all, understand how much effluent can we put at that location, because we have infrastructure that's already in place there. So that's the most economic way to do it. The second project is looking at effluent discharge locations in Barnstable. And so basically, all this says is that we're going to collect, treat wastewater, and then we have to distribute it to a disposal site. And this project is looking at all opportunities for disposal sites in the town. We're already doing that. We've been given direction by the manager and the council that anytime we're disturbing a large land area, parking lots, school fields, that we're looking at, this is an opportunity for disposal. Once again, if you're constructing something, and we can take advantage of that, to get some structure underneath, it's money savings for the project. And then, just a couple of final points. This is something, since the Water Resources Advisory Committee, that we've thought a lot about, and I've got to give Rob Steen, you know, credit for this, I think it makes a lot of sense, and some of you are familiar with this, but we have, at the Marson's Mills School, a wastewater treatment plant there, and it serves the school and housing development. And you can see here, it's 42,900 gallons per day, and how it's distributed, and there's a, it can possibly be expanded to 113,000 gallons per day. That's the disposal capacity. Again, that's the limiting part of this. It built in 1993, it's beyond its design life, so it's going to have to be replaced in the not-too-distant future. So we looked at what the cost of that would be, and you can see here, that's about $16 million to replace that treatment plant for 43,000 gallons a day. And because we're discharging in a zone too, it's possible that DEP will acquire us this TOC, that's Total Organic Carbon, just another treatment requirement, but to get to that would be much more expensive than what it is now. So it doesn't mean that, it could be much more than that. The idea is that we convert that treatment plant to a pump station. So for $19 million, a few million dollars more, we can have much more capacity in the area to treat wastewater in that area, and we can also provide a force main for wastewater between that school, which will be a pump station, and our plant in Hyannis, but also with a gravity line, so we can serve that entire area, you know, and work from 28 out, as you see fit for economic development, or as we have needs there. So for a few million dollars, beyond what we're going to spend anyway, we'll get much more flexibility and capacity. So this is something that we're looking closely at now. And here's what that route would be. And on the far left is where the treatment plant is now, you can see the yellow is force main, and the green is where we'd have gravity sewer, which would be available for connecting to, for individual homes and businesses. And there'd be a pump station, another pump station in the middle of this. So what are the next steps? So we're going to continue our public outreach and plan evolution, and we hope that we get a lot of great input from you all, and the manager, and our public at large. We need, as I mentioned, we've got to develop a financial plan, because that's a requirement moving ahead to the regulatory agencies, and since we're looking at doing that in the fall, or in the summer, we really got to get going on that. We want to keep pushing for alternatives, working with the regulators, getting approvals to try these things, particularly the Marson's Mills, I mean, the Mill Pond dredging, and other alternatives, so that we can save money down the road. We're going to continue on our preliminary design of the traditional projects, the ones we have underway and you've funded, look at the possibilities for the Marson's Mills wastewater treatment facility, which I just talked about, and get the documents, and make a plan to submit to the Cape Cod Commission. And we're going to continue to be aggressive on your behalf, on the town's behalf, as we have been, and I hope you can see from this entire presentation that we haven't been sitting around, there's been a lot of work going on with the past several years, and we're gearing up, we're staffing up, we've got great people, and we're going to continue to be leaders in this area, and in the region, in wastewater, and do what we need to do economically and efficiently for all of us. So with that, I am going to go over here and sit down, I'm going to ask Rob and Amanda to come up, because I imagine you have questions, and that way, I'll have the best person help to answer your questions, because I'm probably not the best one for most of them, so.
And I'm going to make a concluding remark, if that's okay. I think Dan, thank you, Dan, and thank you all for, you know, all the work that you've done. I hope that, from this presentation, you see that Barnstable is actively working on this. I think it's really important, too, that we understand that, well, I've been here for 29 years, and I have been doing, I was hired when we originally were upgrading the treatment plant to be the project manager, to do those projects. And we were doing what they called back then a wastewater facilities plan, now we call it comprehensive water management planning. We were always doing construction, infrastructure investment concurrent with the next plan. So the belief that we are not proceeding until the next version of a comprehensive water management place is in place and approved, is not accurate. And beyond that, when we've gone in for state revolving funds, we have always received approval from the state, because our assumptions are sound, they're backed up, and by good engineering, and certainly, that's another indicator that we are doing all of this in a comprehensive, reasonable, cost-effective manner. So I think that's important to recognize. We do need to have the plans, no question, but plans are always being updated, and Dan alluded to the emerging contaminants. You're not going to see enough information in this comprehensive water management plan to satisfy your concerns about emerging contaminants, just like the last one we did in 2006 wasn't enough to address the nutrient loading. And just keep going back, and you will see that, and 10 years from now, we'll have more emerging contaminants beyond the ones that we're aware of now. That's the nature of what we do in managing these resources. I think also, Director Santos was right on point by saying that we need to share with our public that we are exhausting every effort to look at every option, especially the non-traditionals. That's one that wasn't there 10 years ago for us. We knew they were out there, and they were talking about some innovative systems, but the door's really been opened for us to combine dredging, aquaculture, you know, some of these innovative uses of natural systems that can absorb these nutrients. Those opportunities weren't there a decade ago. We knew they existed, but they just weren't, the regulators weren't ready for that. They are engaged in that discussion now. I believe we have to exhaust those going forward, show the public that we've gotten, we've used the systems in a healthy, safe way to the best that we can, and then put in place the pumps and pipes, because we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars for each of these systems. This is significant. So I just wanted to share that in closing with you. I think, thank you again for laying it out the way you have, and indulging us for this period of time, and I'll turn it over to any questions you may have.
All councilors, who among you is the bravest? I'm looking for some hands. Yes, Councilor Wallace?
Thank you, Dan, thank you for that incredible, comprehensive report. About these permeable, yeah, they're basically cylinders of soybean oil or something? And how do they work, and are they a cost-effective way of mitigating more cost-effective?
They're really in kind of beta testing right now. There's a couple of ways to do it. You can envision digging a trench with an excavator, a narrow trench with one bucket wide, deep, and you fill that with, say, wood chips, because that's actually been one thing that's been effective in treating nitrogen. So you fill that trench, but groundwater is going to go through there, and it treats it, and what comes out the other side is much less nitrogen in it. So that's one way to do it. Another way to do it is with round, like a well, you drill, because that's easier to drill rather than excavating, especially if it's going to go deep, then it's easier to do with a drill rig, and then you put the material in these cylinders at a certain distance from one another, that the groundwater goes through these. So there's a couple of ways to do that.
Does it actually convert the nitrogen into a gas? Is that what it's actually doing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilors, yes, Bean, Benner?
First, Dan, I just want to thank you so much. That was worth every minute, so I appreciate it. It was comprehensive, but it was also, what was, for me, and I don't have any questions, because I need to digest all this information, there's quite a bit, but for me, what was very helpful about it was that it starts to tie into all of these other conversations we're having in regards to housing, for example, or economic development, and there's, you know, one school of thought that, you know, we develop a housing production plan, but we really have to incorporate what's going on with our water resources and wastewater management, in order for us to identify where it makes sense for us to put housing, for example, and the same goes with economic development. The other thing, going to, you know, being open and communicative with our public, and making sure that they're part of this process and understand what's going on, as changes happen, or we start approving these large budget items, is that, you know, it ties into things like, you know, there was some, a number of times, public comment came forth about the consideration of lands at the high school being considered for effluent discharge, and really, it just goes to your point of, while we've got the ground dug up, we should make sure that we've make sure that we've thoroughly made sure that we can't use it for anything else as well. So it's, this, I think, was incredibly informative and helpful for understanding all of these other conversations that are happening at the same time, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to invite any of you, if you want to learn more about this, I know this is hard to absorb in an hour and, you know, deal with it, but if you have a question or you want, you come on in and we'll answer your questions, we'll run you through the tool, the model, we'll provide to whatever level you want information, and there's a lot of it. So if you're interested, you know, let us know, and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Councilor Cullen.
Yes, I was jokingly writing notes that you were trying to bore us into submission so we never asked you to come back to present again. It didn't work.
Boring?
You failed. You failed miserably. But I'm particularly interested and thankful for the diligence with regard to the alternative methods, because I think the taxpayer is concerned definitely about the efficacy of those, but also really freaked out by the cost of sewers, as they should be. So I'm thankful that, and I applaud you guys for sticking to it and asking and being diligent about that. I also am selfishly very interested in searing other parts of town so that they can share the burden of the cost of the housing that we do in Hyannis. So I'm looking forward to that, for Centerville to be a part of it and for Finney's Lane to be a part of it and for some sharing of this burden of the concentration of the 40B and stuff that we see in Hyannis. So that's my selfish little thing. But thank you very much. It's been a huge amount of work, and can you repeat that?
Thank you, Councilor Cullen. Councilor Rap Grissette, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I hope interim is short-lived with Amanda. Welcome to your new position. Secondly, thank you, Dan, for this comprehensive presentation, and I think Barnstable should be very proud to have a team such as you've put together and the manager has put together to address this issue, which I believe is the number one issue in the town. And I would like a copy of that, if you could send it to us.
Sure, I will make it available as a PDF tomorrow and...
Okay. That'd be great. You know, I've collected a lot of your drafts, maps and whatnot over the years, and it's changed a little bit. And of course, I was kind of delightfully surprised with Agenda Item 2019-07-1 for $250,000 to do a feasibility study with regard to Ktuit. When I look at the needs areas in the wastewater planning, I don't see bright red in Ktuit. I see bright red in Osterville. I see bright red in Marston's Mills, all upward of that. The feasibility study in Ktuit, and then I hear about economic development, there are no business areas in Ktuit, but maybe down the road there could be. Will the feasibility study on that take into account the Marston's Mills, all those areas west of Osterville, including Osterville, or not be part, Osterville not be part of that? Because Osterville Center is, got a lot of multifamily housing condominiums, a lot of cluster development there and a lot of business. Where in the plan is Osterville?
Thank you for the question, Councilor. That's Rob Steen, Department of Public Works. So what the feasibility study is going to look at is exactly where does that line fall? Right now, based on our preliminary numbers and looking at it, we suspect that when you get a little east of the village line, if you can think of the village line for Ktuit village line, you're probably more cost-effective to come east. If you're west of that village line, you're more effective to go west, if that makes sense. So what the feasibility study is really looking at is two or three things. One, what can JBCC really do? Because it won't be the existing facility that's there, and what's going to limit that is what its disposal capacity is and what disposal opportunities are up there for us, and to what magnitude could those be? It's got to nail that first. Then it's looking at, and we are going to do a lot of this piece of the work, is, you know, where is that line where it's appropriate for flows to go that way, assuming JBCC has found a half-capacity, and we can come up with the cooperative agreements with our fellow communities to work with them on that facility, to then say that would go that way. So I don't think at this point in time, it's designated specifically that this will only go there and this will only go here. That's kind of all what's going to get figured out as we start to get into it. And that's why we're asking for what we're asking for, because we're going to need more than just the three of us cranking on that to really get after some of those issues and really start to understand, where is that dividing line? How much should go that way? How much can go that way? What's the right way for it to go that way? Then we need to engage with you and the village and Osterville and their village and Marston's Mills and start to say, okay, this changes the paradigm a little bit, things that were originally thought to be in Phase Two or Phase Three because of where we originally thought we were going to be treating and disposing may now be able to be pulled forward. Is there a need to do that? Is there a desire to do that? We still have to do it at some point in time, but the timing of that now can come into discussion easier if we have that opportunity in terms of treatment and disposal. Again, no promises on that, but that's why we're asking for what we're asking for, to start to really figure those questions out, so that we can take those to those next steps and get into those thorough discussions. Did I answer your question or that?
Yes, you did. Another one, if I may? The, and you've answered it with your timeline, but my question was, there've been a lot of conflicting information in articles, reports with regards to our comprehensive wastewater management plan. And you said that the best estimate for submission to Cape Cod Commission and DEP is winter of this year?
Well, summer to Cape Cod Commission and the fall to...
The fall. And I say this because, and I, you know, read the paper this morning, and I was a little taken aback with regard to easing of Barnstable's nitrogen rules could prompt lawsuit. And once again, Conservation Law Foundation is in the news with regards to the, and you mentioned it, the estuary overlay item before the Board of Health. One thing you did say that has resounded with me is all of this is based on not putting anything more into the ground. And so when I read the article about their concerns on lifting the protection of the estuaries, that has me concerned, and I've been upfront with Mark about it, my concern that it's putting the cart before the horse. Until we have this plan and until we have the financials, let's not lift anything and put anything new into the ground until we can treat what's there already. So would you agree with that, that that's a little bit putting the cart before the horse to lift and allow for more discharge prior to infrastructure? Whatever it could be, alternative, PRBs, you know, replicated wetlands or sewers? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this is a major issue. And one that is concerning because this council has nothing to say about it. And I think we should have something to say.
If I may, point of information. I think that question is very pointed, and I know it drives at the heart of your discussion, but I have to say that that's more than I'm prepared to suggest, that a staff should respond to a political type of answer or question. But you're welcome to try to rephrase that, but we need to stay...
Well, I'll just go on, if I may...
You can be on, you're on the record, so please feel free to speak.
If I may, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Dan.
We certainly were, though. We have to be careful of that.
But what I guess I will do, though, is put the council on the spot.
Please do. That's appropriate.
And I'm concerned that that issue, if it's political, okay, and I'm all for economic development and a way to pay for this major problem, and I think everybody should be paying. Every person that owns land in the town of Barnstable or on Cape Cod should be paying to help contribute to rectifying the issue. But I think right now is a bad time to be pushing the lifting of that estuary. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rap Grissette. Any other councilor at this time? Yes. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, excellent report. I'm happy to see that a lot of the work that happened from the Water Management Committee from two years ago that I had the pleasure of serving on, and I see other people in the audience who also served on that, has turned from theory and thought into a concrete plan, if you will, that you presented this evening. But I'm curious about the TMDLs, how those are established, and obviously, depending on the body of water, whether it's an impalement, whether it's an estuary, whether it's the ocean, if you will, whether it's Barnstable Harbor on the north or Three Bays on the south, how is that determined? And I assume that that has to be measured on a regular basis, and the higher the TMDL level, obviously, the better off we are, because it suggests that the more it can absorb, the cleaner the water is, would be logical. So once that's established, is that done on a regular basis? Does that change? And who gives the green light that that's an okay amount? Is that DEP? How's that work?
So the TMDL is developed with these estuary reports that are put together by UMass Dartmouth and the SMAST program, and they work together with DEP, who's the ultimate say in what that TMDL, they approve the TMDL, but they're relying on the work of SMAST to develop that. And they're looking at, using the model and all of the complicating factors that go into that, how much nitrogen can go into a certain water body without degrading the water quality. And so it's ultimately DEP who agrees with that assessment. But there will be, we sample now, we do annual sampling, so we have a good baseline of what our nitrogen is, and in the future, we'll have to keep sampling at certain points to show as we develop wastewater solutions and put things in play, and this is going to take decades. Because one of the things I didn't mention is, you know, the groundwater has travel time, so it takes a lot longer for groundwater to move from, you know, the Ktuit, Main Street in Ktuit to the Ktuit Bay than it does from up at Route 28. The groundwater moves on, say, a foot a day, so you can figure out how long it takes. So you have to consider that, and so it's going to take a long time ultimately to reach the TMDL, what the plan is projecting. And we'll be sampling regularly, and the permit that we'll get ultimately, watershed permit, will have that required sampling frequency and what you have to sample for, and they may adjust the TMDLs in the future. But so far, those TMDLs have been set over the last decade, and I don't know what their plan is to revisit those in the future, but I imagine at some point they may.
Yeah, I'm just assuming that as we dredge, as we clean, as we improve, then those TMDL numbers would probably go up in terms of allowing more to go into that particular body of water.
Well, the TMDL will remain the same. That's always the limit, but your actual nitrogen could be much lower than the limit, and it means, you know, you have a healthy water body.
And is the same formula applied to the phosphorus levels you mentioned in the lakes and the ponds? Is it sort of done the same way?
Sort of. I mean, they can create total maximum daily loads for freshwater bodies and for phosphorus and different contaminants. It's a model, and it takes into account different things based on the contaminant, but yes. But we don't have official TMDLs for those water bodies.
We don't?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Beedenbender?
Thank you. In relation to climate change and rising groundwater levels, how will that over time, how do you see that impacting the evolution of these plans or impacting the work that we're going to be doing on the ground, whether it's alternative searing?
I don't think climate change really has much of a direct correlation with groundwater elevation levels. Climate change and sea level rise may affect, well, if it occurs, will impact infrastructure in our coastal areas. And so any work we do now, we consider it now, and in the future, we'll consider what the predictions are for sea level rise and excess flooding, and we'll make sure that we accommodate that in our planning and not locate facilities there or construct them in such a way that they won't be impacted by that. Go ahead.
One other item on that is that one of the values of having the longer plan is that it allows us to adapt as that happens. So if, where I would see sea level rise really having an effect is it changes the hydrodynamics of the abeyments. Going to Councilor Flores's question about would the TMDLs change? Well, if all of a sudden the hydrodynamics, in terms of how much water goes in and out of them because the water's now higher, what was before a barrier is no longer a barrier, what was before a barrier is now washed away, et cetera, these are dynamic systems, and they're going to change and move. And with changes such as that are predicted, not to say that those are going to happen, I'm not taking a dog in that fight, but were changes to happen, yes, it would potentially change the abeyments hydrodynamics, that would potentially change what the TMDL limits are on those abeyments. That would cause SMAST to have to go back and look at that, those sorts of things. We are cognizant of that, and one of the values of having that longer plan is the ability to adapt and change as our environment adapts and changes. And that's something that's going to have to happen forever. I mean, as long as there's going to be people here and as long as people here have not figured a way out to not go to the bathroom, we're going to have to deal with these issues because we're always going to be in balance with our environment and having to work through that system. Does that kind of get it?
Councilor Dagwone, did I see your question?
Yes, I did. The fact that the 208 plan requires all 15 towns to participate in this and come up with a plan. Initially, for this town, as a counselor, Councilor Rap Grissette, myself and Mr. Chair Gottes were the representatives from this town to the 208 plan for the other, coming together with the other groups, other towns on the Cape, and we each had an area that we had to represent. And I'm, just to see where this has come from that time period to not really understanding a lot of things and seeing this update that you and your staff, Mr. Santos, has presented tonight, has me feeling that we're in pretty good shape. We were not sure where we were headed. When we got together with the other groups, it looked at the base, where were we? You know, where were the baselines and where we needed to go? And we've come so far, and I understand so much more now, listening to this tonight as well as attending many of the various workshops that they've had, talking about alternative treatments and whatnot. So I've been highly educated about a lot of this, but a lot, I realize there's a lot I don't, still don't know. But I just wanted to make a comment that I think that this, that I feel that we're in great, in great shape, just the way you presented this tonight. This was a great update and a great comprehensive plan. But I wanted to ask about something that you mentioned. You talked about abandoned bogs. Who owns the bogs? I mean, do we own that property? When I hear stuff like that, that we're going to...
Well, what I was referring specifically to in the Marston's Rose River system, there's a series of, some abandoned and some active bogs, but as you know, the cranberry industry is not really...
So nobody owns that land?
No, they're privately owned.
Okay.
So we would either have to get permission easements or ownership to be able to do these, and we're, you know, preliminary looking at that now as opportunities, but yeah, they are privately owned.
And you also talked about all the three phases, but you didn't mention anything about, do we have any intermunicipal agreements, and when does that come into play?
Well, we have an intermunicipal agreement with Sandwich and Mashpee.
At the current...
Because we share the Papa Nesset Bay watershed, and so we have entered into an agreement with them to talk about how we're going to meet the TMDL on Papa Nesset Bay. Now, Barnstable has a very small portion, I think it's 12 or 15% of the nitrogen going into Papa Nesset Bay, so we won't have a big role in the cost of addressing that, but certainly we'll be a participant. We also are working and have met with the town of Yarmouth, and the town of Yarmouth has gotten a grant to work with us and their consultant on opportunities for an intermunicipal agreement with Yarmouth relative to Lewis... opportunities for an intermunicipal agreement with Yarmouth relative to Lewis Bay watershed, which is contributing, you know, Hyannis Harbor and contributing nitrogen there. But also, opportunities that may come from their possibly wanting to use our wastewater treatment plant for excess capacity. But it's possible, as I mentioned, we have issues with disposal, effluent disposal. We may be able to get effluent disposal in Yarmouth. So, there could be an opportunity there for a sharing which benefits both communities. But again, that's at a very preliminary level right now.
That sounds like those went pretty smooth.
Yeah, it's going well.
Thank you for that.
Any other councils? Yes, Councilor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd just like to thank Town Manager Ells, especially for his closing comments, and you, Dan, for the efforts that you've put forward in this, this, you can't even call it a project, it's so vast. I was thinking that, you know, manager indicated that kind of some of the highlights that you've already gone through over the last year and a half, really since 15, three years, I guess. I guess 19 is four years, right? Happy New Year. There's been comments around town that I've heard where we don't have a comprehensive plan here in the town of Barnstable. And I think through this presentation and certainly through the communication that you've given us over the last year and a half, we're not standing around doing nothing. And the cost to create needed solutions in this, not only is it remarkable, but it's intimidating. The financing, the scope, it's, it could be deemed almost overwhelming, but, you know, the town staff has taken this on as rightly we have to and as well as the rest of the Cape residents. So, in that regard, I find it maybe shallow, you know, these comments about we're doing nothing. I will also just make a comment that when you talk about a comprehensive plan, especially something of this scale, it can't be comprehensive. It's over 20, 30, 40 years, and it's subject to change. It's not finite. There will be some systems that will perform better than others. So, I'm assuming, and I hate to assume, but I'm assuming that as we realize some of the loading reductions in the embankments and in the water, that the shift will change. So, the plan that we're bringing forward may not be the plan that we finish with. And I think that that really needs to be understood, you know? You could put it on paper today, we're talking 20 years, what's going to be, what's going to happen in 20, 40, and 60 years? And the dollars are just, they're big. So, by focusing on, on, let's just say, you know, you want to look before you leap into these projects. And I think the engineering, the studying, you have to do that first. So, again, back to the whole comment about we're doing nothing, it's false. And, you know, it needs to be conveyed to the public. And again, thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Any other councils before I ask for second questions? Yes, Councilor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the years, I haven't said this very often because I find it redundant and one of the reasons I wouldn't vote to go past 11. But in this case, I have to, and that was an exceptional presentation. This is something this council and this town has been looking at for years, back to when I first started, '07, '08 with President Crocker. You know, we were talking about nitrogen loading and septic systems and fertilizer. And I think the town of Barnstable was ahead of the ball. So, my question is, and it was brought up, that we wouldn't see enough about emerging contaminants in the presentation because we can't. But in the vein of, you know, 12 years ago when we were ahead of this, what processes or what kind of planning do we have to stay ahead of the emerging contaminants issue to model our plan and adjust it as we go? Because I agree that I think that's the biggest thing out there that we're facing.
Well, what we have to be careful of is how much we're relying on onsite septic systems. Because it's most likely that onsite septic systems, in the traditional sense, won't be able to treat emerging contaminants. So, we need to continue to work with alternatives and ask that question as we evaluate alternatives and talk to those designers, are we dealing with emerging contaminants? How does your system do with, you know, these things? Have you checked it for PFOS and other, you know, pharmaceuticals and these things that we're seeing in the environment? Now, in the wastewater treatment plant, we have much more ability to treat that because it's all being collected and we have much more control over that process. And we can design aspects of the process, hopefully, that'll treat these things. It's possible there are some emerging contaminants that can't ever be treated. And then, you know, that's another problem. But, and I mean, that's the reality of it. So, the fear I have is that while we may want to rely on onsite systems because we can address the nitrogen, we may never be able to address the emerging contaminant issue. And if we put our eggs in that onsite basket, we could be facing, you know, a bigger problem in 10, 20, 30 years from the emerging contaminants. So, it's something we have to keep asking ourselves and looking forward and not burying our head in the sand, but making it front and center of all of our planning.
I'm looking for first questions first, and I believe Councilor Ovek is up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great presentation. I actually had the privilege of Rob presenting something similar in Marston's Mills. And so, it's great to hear it again because it becomes a little more permanent. Just curiosity's sake, as far as the Mill Pond Project goes, has there been any recent developments in, you know, moving forward with that project? Again, I'm not looking for a full-on explanation per se, but just, I don't know, like kind of Cliff Notes version for the people maybe watching at home.
Yes, we've had to work with DEP, and they're requiring some additional sampling. I think we've set that up. That's imminent. But we're regularly speaking with the highest levels in the region and in Boston. But once they ask for data, then we've got to get that data and let them absorb it. And it's definitely a process. But we're going to, we're going to keep up with it and use every, you know, every opportunity we have to try to sell this and, you know, gain the benefit that we think is there from it.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate you blazing a road in new territory, you know, taking the lead.
I will take second questions from councilors. Yes, Councilor Raporessetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. One follow-up with regard to the dredging. I mean, the image you showed is quite different from actually what it looks like at the point of the island. There's actually two points of the island. Was the second point that was kind of newly formed, kind of formed a crotch, is that part of the scope to be removed in phase, in this phase?
I'm going to give Griffin an opportunity. He's the project manager on this project.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Griffin.
Thank you. Griffin Bowden, interim assistant town engineer. That will be part of the year two and year three scope. Portions of that second bar will be part of the year two and year three scope. Not the entire portion of that, but a good chunk of it. We're going, the, over the three years, about 400 feet of the tip of the island are going to be taken off, are taken off. Right now, we're doing 130 feet. In doing so, we're just missing what is accreted, what has formed there.
Is that, that's considerable, what has formed there?
Yeah, and just the, by the path we're taking this year, we're just, we're just going by it, we're just missing that dip. But next year, that'll be a significant portion of the project. And then, the third year as well will be another significant portion of that.
And is all the land, all the land, because that's actually what you're doing, dredging and removing, is that all being put down at the eastern part? Or is any of that going to be deposited on land?
A portion of it of this year was actually deposited on the western side of the island, a little further inland for habitat area, about 4,000 cubic yards. That was the first area we disposed of material at over the first handful of days that we dredged. And now, the material's going to the eastern end of the island.
Is there any dewatering with this first phase?
There is. There is. At both locations where we've been dewatering, so we've constructed large pits where the material dewater's out and it reduces the turbidity prior to discharge. We've set up, we set up a pit at the first location, the habitat area. And currently, there's a pit at the eastern end where we're dewatering and spreading material.
And they've got, what, 12 days left in phase one? And then, the next phase will start when, October 1st, 15th?
We're allowed to begin dredging October 15th. So, the idea would be to put ourselves in position to start as soon as we can.
Does it have to be put out to bid, the second phase?
Yeah, this year it was bid for just the first phase.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilor Neary, second follow-up?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, only because I guess I'm intimidated by the dollar cost. Just as a rough number, the pump station on 132 Cape Cod 5, what does that represent? Monetary value, rough? A dollar, is it 100 million? What, a gazillion?
We don't know. I mean, we can estimate what a pump station that size might be, but we don't know what that one actually has cost. And they haven't shared that with us.
So, I don't know what that pump station's going to cost because they're building it and they've not shared that number with us. A comparable pump station would not be, depending on the environment that you're in and the situation you're in, somewhere between in today's dollars, $500,000 to $700,000 in there, would not be outside of the realm of reasonable for a pump station like that.
My fellow councilors, we all set? All right, this hasn't been fun enough for Big Jim, so let's bring it up a little bit and make this a little more fun. First of all, Rob Stein, you didn't introduce yourself the first time, and you're one of the most knowledgeable guys going out and around. Question number one's for you, Rob Stein. You're out and around, you're there all the time. Are you a Bonsville and active participant on this issue as one of the 15 towns in the town of Barnstable?
Yes, and I've said this publicly at every venue that I've spoken at. One of the things that's been impressive working in this town, and I was a consultant for 12 years before coming here, working wastewater issues and CWMPs and other communities. Traditionally, when you get into a community, what the community's perspective is, is we want to do as little as we can do or as only what we have to do and spend as little money as we can. That's not to say Barnstable wants to waste money, but Barnstable's approach has been other than that. Our Barnstable's approach is, look, what is the problem? Let's get going and let's do it. And I think the witness to that is the evolution of the plan that you've seen. When Rack and we first developed the plan, much of that Finney's Lane Long Pond Project that you currently see was actually in phase two work. It was not considered phase one work. And as that started to be socialized with town council, town council, what we heard back was, that's nice, but we need to move faster, we need to do more, what can you do more? So, we went back, used the plan to inform us of what makes the next logical step to do, and that's where those projects came from. They came in front of you, you've approved them, that's great kudos to you guys. And that, those are not small dollar projects. Those are not insignificant projects that you're undertaking with that. But I think it shows a forward-leaning perspective that this community has had on wastewater and dealing with problems with wastewater. And so, I would say that from at least my experience, Amanda could speak to her experience because she's also done similar things in communities, it has been, it's been very refreshing working. And we were talking to Ray Jack today about sort of the differences that we're experiencing versus what some of our neighboring communities are experiencing. Very different perspectives in terms of how, what you all have set for a tone via your CIPs, via discussions like this, via the times that I've been in Ktuit, Marston's Mills or other places to have these discussions and what the community has said back to us. I have yet to hear at one of these public outreaches, someone come up to me and say, you know, we don't want to spend any money, don't do this. If anything, the complaint I hear is 60 years, why so long? So, I think that that speaks to what we're doing and how aggressively we're doing it. Last point I'll make on this is if you look at the commitment the town managers made by allowing DPW to staff to the levels, people such as who you just heard with Griffin or Amanda, who built the tool that allowed us to do this from basically scratch with GIS, some amazingly talented people have been allowed to be brought aboard to really facilitate this. And Dan's not kidding. If you look at what other communities pay for their CWMPs, it's on the order of $500,000 to $700,000.
Next contestant, administrative, I should say, vice town manager or assistant town manager, could you come forward for a moment, please? Time to talk the base. Here's the guy who's chasing the base for us. We know the base has a problem. We know the base needs funding to keep its military presence up. We know that funding's always a problem. We know that without funding, there's no people, with no people, there's no sewer. And we know the sewer system is a problem for that purpose. Is that a quick synopsis of something like that?
That would be accurate.
Okay. Next, we know that that's only about five miles from our western side. Is that somewhat accurate? Next, we know that if we have a chance to get in there and shake the trees, we have a chance for federal and state aid because of the whole process there. Is that an assumption that we're chasing?
I believe so. I mean, the upper four Cape towns have been actively engaged with the base and have received state grants to date.
Yes.
To do exactly this. So, they're welcoming us with open arms to join them in that endeavor.
Exciting. We just haven't had that option anywhere else. Next, we know that the flow is limited there. So, for us to draw from Ktuit, which is the closest distance, that suggests we're shipping it only five miles that way instead of miles towards Hyannis to show that we have shovel readiness, is this a reasonable idea for a starting point for discussions at that level?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. If we have a chance to open that place up and really do some good and bring forward a collaborative of all the towns who need that base because they have the land mass and none of us do anymore to discharge in areas that not only cannot handle any more nitrates, but won't even be affected by the discharge, this plant gives us the best option in the closest distance. Is that a fair assumption?
I think it's a very fair assumption.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, can I get you up here? You have had everybody we've asked come to the table, sit with us, talk with us, and listen to the discussion. You've brought forward new order after new order to address a direction. Is it your understanding, after being a former DPW director, that these types of plans need these changes? I.e., Cape Wind shows up at our doorstep, we cut a deal which we didn't even think was possible less than a year ago, we now are opening it. And so, originally, we thought out on West Main Street, that pumping station would be great to get us to Hyannis. We now rethinking all that, and we're looking at spending some money coming up the same path as Cape Wind or Wind Vineyard or whatever it is because they're going to assist us in the expenses. Is that the type of business that you would like to see and adjust as fast as you can on the field for?
Absolutely. We have to be adaptive to the opportunities as they present themselves. And in this particular case, it's an absolute opportunity.
So, that's how we're going to approach these problems as we go forward. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, I think adaptive's a good word. I think you'll see us evolve through our plans and adapt them to the conditions at the time. And over a 60-year period, we're going to see a lot of change. So, we got to remain, yeah, we have to have good information and thank goodness we have good people and be ready to move on this because it'll help us to better explain to the public why we're investing the way that we are.
Yeah, thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome.
Director Santos, your turn. I wasn't going to leave you out.
Next.
We were talking about going into the ditch with Cape Wind, and we were talking about coming down to grab some real effluent on an area that's tied already to the Long Pond issue and to everything we know, which is in the 60-plus area of contamination. Is that a fair assumption of what we hope to get by bringing the line down to get more active and have more lines into that highly suited area with the best ability for us to take it back to Hyannis?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Hyannis, we're going to spend money and have a study on the fields to know how much capacity we really can handle there. We're confident that this planning, though, down into this part of the estuary will get us close to the peaker parts of that pitch and catch plan. So, this is a suitable area, though, for us to start in our piping.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
So, we have an issue there. So, all of this stuff is headed towards Hyannis, and everything we're doing in the Ktuit is headed towards Marston's Mills. Anything we do in the planning of Ktuit by bringing pipes out to Route 28, is that a sound basis as to whether we eventually would ship it to Hyannis if we are unsuccessful in shipping it to Mashpee?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm done with my fun. We're doing some great things here, guys. And if you don't think so, you're not following the ball as it bounces down the road. So, I'm very grateful to this crowd. They've been most responsive. So, I'm very grateful to this crowd, they've been most responsive to everything, the manager has had everybody at the table every time we needed a discussion, we are not going backwards on taking care of the estuaries. Let's get that straight, let's say that every time we meet, and let's make sure everybody knows Barnstable's committed to this problem. Great presentation, thank you very much. I'm on to orders of the day, if this council thinks we're ready to handle it. Ready with your blessing. I have 21963. Somebody want to jump up on this? Sure, Vice President.
Item number 2019-063, this is old business, a public hearing, it's a roll call vote, it is an appropriation order of $100,000, it's community preservation funds for the Community Housing Creation Seashore Homes, Inc., at 185 Ridgewood Avenue, Hyannis, as written.
I have a first and a second. In front of us, we're very fortunate today, we have Lindsey Council, who is the chair of the Community Preservation Committee for the rationale.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year, and thank you for bearing with us, but, talk about somebody who's helped us along the way, somebody who gets it, here's a guy who understands the estuaries, thank you for your service.
Thank you, and congratulations on the new offices for the council, welcome, look forward to working with you in the coming year. I'm Lindsey Council, chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and we have an application from Seashore Homes, who is seeking approval from the town council through the town manager for CPA Community Housing Funds in the amount of $100,000 in support of the development of one deed-restricted affordable rental unit within a new multifamily development containing eight two-bedroom apartments located at 185 Ridgewood Avenue, Hyannis, Mass., map 328 parcel 226. Throughout the permitting process, this new multifamily development has received the support of many local organizations and boards, and it's most recently approved by this town council for a regulatory agreement through which the one deed-restricted affordable rental unit was reserved for residents who make 80% less of the area median income. That's the project in a nutshell, as I mentioned, you guys have seen this before, the Masons are here tonight to answer any questions you have on the project, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, that's the opening of the public hearing, do I hear any public would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll take a vote to close the public hearing portion, please. So moved and seconded, thank you very much, all those in favor signify by saying aye. The nays and the abstentions, hearing none, please record that as unanimous. Counselors, questions? Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Question, Lindsey, at the CPC meeting where this is being recommended from, was that a unanimous vote?
Yeah, Mr. Members Present, we had, I believe, two absences that night.
So, how many members on that committee?
Nine.
Nine, so seven people voting unanimously to support this.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselors?
Questions?
Thank you, I have moved the question, first and seconded, all those in favor of moving the question in front of us, please signify by saying aye. Any nays, abstentions, please record that as unanimous, this is a roll call vote, please.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crusetti?
Yes.
Hebert? Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep? Steinhilde? Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
That's a unanimous vote, thank you very much, congratulations, thank you for your effort in the downtown area.
Thank you.
Under new business may be acted upon. 2019, Counselor Cullen, please. 066, page 5.
Yes, item 2019-066, acceptance of federal fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $13,760 from Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of funding handheld radios used in emergency management operations, as written.
Thank you very much, and we're fortunate to have one of our special grant writers who's very successful at this, and we're grateful for that, Ann, Ann's playing, please Ann for the rationale.
The Emergency Management Performance Grant is a grant from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency that we have been receiving for several years, and that has helped the department, the police department, to replace handheld portable radios for each officer to a digital format. Old radios cannot be repaired due to the obsolescence of the old analog radio technology. To date, with this, with the help of this grant funding, approximately 85% of radios have been replaced. This 2018 EMPG grant will enable us to purchase four more radios for a grant total of $13,637, Each, each radio costs approximately $3,400, so we're very fortunate to have this funding to continue building the replacement of our radios. The grant does require 100% match that is satisfied with the annual purchase of the reverse 911 maintenance contract.
Thank you very much, that's the rationale, this is the public hearing, anybody interested in speaking? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, first and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No's and abstentions, hearing none, that's unanimous. Counselors, any questions for Ann on this issue, besides our gratitude for, again, excellent job writing the grant?
Thank you.
Move the question, I got a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any no's? It's unanimous. I am calling 2019-0, I'm sorry, 066 for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? No, please record that as unanimous, thank you, Ann.
Thank you very much.
I do believe we keep you for one more, though. 067, please, I'll take Counselor Cullen for the second one on this as well, please.
I think we, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't think we had another one on tonight. It might be, maybe it's Dan, it's Dan.
Oh, Dan, are we already through two of them? I thought we had two, 66 and 67, according to the way my paperwork's written up. Okay.
So I'll open 2019-067.
Thank you very much.
Acceptance of a grant in the amount of $14,300 from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of enhancing its waste reduction programs, as written.
Thank you, my apologies, Ann, thank you very much.
She was worried there.
We got that guy again. Dan.
You're welcome to do it. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works.
I'd really rather hear from Ann, but go ahead, Dan.
This is a, this is a grant that we get every year, the town has been awarded $14,300 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection under their recycling dividends program. The grant award was made because of specific programs that we have in place, and the town has implemented, that maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. Acceptance of this grant will allow the solid waste division in the town to enhance its waste reduction programs through the acquisition of public space and outdoor event, recycling containers, recycling carts, and recycling bins, waste reduction, and/or recycling outreach, and educational materials, and other approved expenses. There is no guarantee, cost share, or match requirements for this grant, and no impact in a negative way on our operating budget at all, thank you.
Thank you, this may be acted upon, anyone from the public want to speak to this, please? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public process. Second, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye. No's and abstentions, hearing none, that's unanimous. Counselors, any discussion?
Questions?
Move the question, oh, one more, yes, please, Counselor Rap Crusetti.
Thank you. Any, any thoughts about putting next to the big bellies that we've installed, recycling, do they make recycling big bellies?
They do, they're very expensive, and the problem is, like a lot of recycling containers at public spaces, you don't get a lot of recycling, and then you have to manually go through that to get the recycling out, and that's, you know, as Counselor Hebert has that program at the beaches and offered that to the town, but it's just way too labor-intensive to really get any value from it.
So where, where you?
And the way the cost of recycling is now, I just frankly assume it just go in the trash, because it's costing us money to get rid of it.
You better not say that, because everybody's going to stop, because it's really become so burdens, burdensome to recycle, but when you say you're going to put this in public space and outdoor event, are you going to put them in town hall, recycling?
Well, these are, these are temporary, usually, for, for temporary events, like when they have the parade.
Okay.
Something like that, and that's all we.
Because I think it's important for the town to, to lead in recycling, if we're going to, you know, make people do it, we should, you know, set by example in the schools or wherever we're going with it, so.
Right, every year, we kind of change the focus, I think this year, we need to spend more, more of these funds on education, and education on mostly the reuse and the reduction.
Right.
Because we don't, you know, the recycling costs us money to get rid of, so let's figure out how to reduce the amount of waste, and how to reuse things, and I think that's going to take education, and, and we need to step up those efforts, so that's my focus probably on these funds, is to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of 219-067 as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. 219-068, moving into a public hearing on 207, Counselor Tinsley, would you assist me with this, please?
Certainly, Mr. President. Refer to a public hearing on February 7th of 2019, item number 2019-068, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $250,000 for a feasibility study and preliminary investigations of the wastewater treatment facility at Joint Base Cape Cod, as written.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving this to a public hearing on February 7th, this is 2019-068 as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Counselor Tinsley, could I ask you for one more, please, 219-069, same date, February 7th.
Certainly, Mr. President. New business, refer to a public hearing on February 7th of 2019, item number 2019-069, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $835,000 for the design of Vineyard Wind Associated Roadway and utility work, as written.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving this to a public hearing on February 7th, that is 2019-069 as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that, and make a note that Counselor Cullen is off the dais at this Counselor Neary, would you assist me, please, with a second reading for 117 on 219-079? Oh, 070, excuse me.
This is new business which may be acted upon?
Page 13?
Yep.
I will ask Counsel, Vice President to take over here for a moment.
Wrong one.
Vice President, will you read the, heading into a second date?
This is new business referring to a second reading on 11719, item 2019-070, it's a resolve accepting an easement at 307 Falmouth Road, Route 28, in Hyannis, Massachusetts, as written.
Do I have a second? I have a first and a second, to move 2019-070 to a second read on 11719, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous, this is a unanimous group here, thank you for the effort. I will take Counselor Rap Crusetti, please, for 071.
Under new business, this is referring to a public hearing on February 7th, 2019, item 2019-071, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $250,000 for conceptual planning and design of the first stage of sewer expansion in Ktuhit, as written.
Second.
Thank you, I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving 2019-071 to a public hearing on February 7th, 19, as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. I would ask one more time, please, Counselor Rap Crusetti, for 072.
Under new business, refer to a second reading on January 17th, 2019, item 2019-072, order to create a water stabilization fund for the purpose of making comprehensive improvements to the town's drinking water and fire readiness services, as written.
Do I have a second? I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving for a second read on 11719, 2019-072, as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, please record that as unanimous. Counselor Wallace, will you help me get to the finish line? I'm on 073.
I would love to, Mr. President, thank you. This is new business, we're going to refer this to a second reading on January 17th, 2019, it's item number 2019-073, order to accept the fourth paragraph of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, subsection 5B, allowing for the dedication of certain revenue streams to stabilization funds without further appropriation.
Do I have a second? Yes, I do, thank you very much. All those in favor of moving 2019-073 as drafted to a second read on 11719, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you very much, Counselor Wallace, you get the finish line.
Thank you, again, Mr. President, this is new business, we're going to refer to a second reading on January 17th, 2019, it's item number 2019-074, order to dedicate future host community agreement payments from Vineyard Wind to the Water Stabilization Fund, as written.
Thank you very much, I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving 2019-074 as written to a second reading on 11719, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any oppositions? Please record that as unanimous, and I want to thank you all for being attentive, we had quite a night of presentations, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I got a first and a second, all those in favor of adjourning. All right, it's unanimous, thank you very much.